Good morning. At this time, we'll call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Thursday, February 10. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers is absent. Commissioner O'Hara.
Here.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert here. We do have a quorum present. Would you join with me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We do not have any presentations to make this morning, so we will turn to the public comment portion of our agenda. We do have some virtual speakers and those in person today. And again, would remind those who are speaking that the time limit is two minutes, and there is a modem on the podium to help remind you of that time. If you exceed the two-minute time period, then the chair will be required to ask you to conclude. So, as I recall, the clerk, we had two printed comments earlier received by the commission. Is that correct?
Yes, I think so. Two or three.
All right. Thank you. And those have been distributed to the commission. So, we will go to our virtual speakers first and then the in-person. So clerk, please read the first name.
We will have Cassie Walworth, and then we will have Debbie Detmer. Cassie Walworth.
Cassie is not on the webinar right now.
Okay, we'll move ahead to Debbie Detmer and see if Cassie gets on before we're done with speakers. Thank you.
Hi, this is Debbie Detmer. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
And I just wanted to say, wow, at least 54 out of 78, that's 70% of our COVID hospitalizations at KUMed have had some number of vaccinations. And finally, the data from the UK and Israel is showing up here. At 7:00 a.m., two days ago, the total patients was 171. And no longer in isolation was 93. So I'm assuming these patients come in with something other than COVID. They test positive, now they've isolated, and now they've done a negative test. That's 93. I'm still in the hospital, not in isolation. Patients with active COVID-19 infections is only 78 people. Now, out of those, known COVID-19 vaccines recorded for 24 of them received at least one dose of the recommended mRNA primary series, is 13. And the ones that have completed everything and done their boosters, there's 41 of them. So you've got more vaccinated than you do unvaccinated. The status of the vaccinated patients with active infections is with boosters is 23, and vaccinated, recommended booster not yet due was 12, and vaccinated and boosted was 6. So ICU patients, you've got 20 of them. No COVID-19 vaccine records, 10. The other 10 are not due for their vaccines yet and are vaccinated. You've got the ones on ventilator, there's 11. No COVID-19 vaccine records for five of them. The others, six are vaccinated. Status of ventilation, vaccinated in ICU, not overdue for booster is two. Vaccinated in ICU, recommended booster not yet due, zero. And vaccinated in ICU and boosted, two. And the latest patient death from COVID-19 was three of them on two six. And so Dr. Ariely, if you can make a phone call and let me know what those three, if they were vaccinated, their vaccinated status, that would be great. Also, so that's 70% of these persons have not had some form of vaccination. If you look at just unvacc versus fully vaxxed, you will see there's more vaccinated in the hospital than there is unvacc.
Next speaker.
Now we have Cassie Walworth. Cassie Walworth.
Is the speaker there?
Cassie, are you there?
All right, let's go to the next speaker, and then we'll come back to that one.
Now we will have in-person Daniel Austin. Daniel Austin.
Good morning. My name is Daniel Austin. I reside in Merriam, Kansas. Does it really come as a surprise to anyone that there are rising cases of speech delays in children as a result of mask mandates? Should it really surprise anyone? Is common sense even a thing anymore? This is one of the things we had been saying from the beginning, that covering your mouth prevents people who rely on lip reading to understand what you're saying, along with creating long-term psychological damage. And learning how to shape your mouth to form words is an important skill kids need to learn from an early age. They need to actually see your lips forming the words so they know how to say them.
Recording stopped.
So they know how to say them, especially if they take speech therapy. A news report from the WPBF news station.
Recording in progress.
An ABC affiliate.
I'm sorry for that interruption.
Covered this issue very recently.
Daniel, keep me start over, correct, because of that interruption?
Well, go ahead. Complete your comments.
An ABC affiliate covered this issue very recently, as if we needed them to verify our points for us, or that we even needed a study at all to affirm our common sense. Then again, this is just one of those things you are supposedly not allowed to say until one of the so-called experts says it. And even then, you still may not be allowed to say it yourself, or you'll be flagged for misinformation on social media or canceled by the mob. Or if you're a doctor speaking out about this, you could lose your medical license. Once again, is common sense even a thing anymore? Bottom line, you are abusing children. Let me remind you that you and the school boards are public servants, and you work for us. Take the masks off. If you don't, you will be held accountable for your actions.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Now we have Ben Hobart. Ben Hobart. Then we will go back and try for Cassie Walworth. Ben Hobart.
Ben Hobart, Westwood Hills. My comments relate to this board's resolution of April 29th, 2021, which strongly recommended.
Can you speak a little louder?
My comments relate to the board's resolution of April 29, 2021, which strongly recommended that every eligible person get one of the COVID-19 so-called vaccines. By terms, it will extend to infants below the age of five, who become eligible for the clot shots later this month, assuming that the FDA and CDC rubber-stamp Pfizer's application for extension of the EUA to infants. Parents, you will have the most significant decision of your young child's life, whether to subject them to the clot shot or not. Please do not treat this as a no-brainer decision, because it could have grave implications for your child's health. Let us turn to the statements made in the board's February 3 meeting. At the 133 mark, Ms. Holshu indicated Johnson County residents, 80 Johnson County residents died in January due to COVID-19. I think that statement is misleading and extreme. Inform the public about the comorbidity factors, terminal cancer, obesity, COPD, et cetera. The CDC has acknowledged only 6% of reported COVID deaths are solely attributable to COVID. By now, we also know the unvaccinated definition includes any illness that occurs at any time after the first dose or the second dose until 14 days have elapsed after the second dose. All adverse reactions to the vaccines, so-called, are also within the unvaccinated category. Parents, Omicron is mild. Dr. Angelique Codez, who isolated the variant, was pressured not to publicly state that it was a mild illness. It does not have a significant risk profile. The flu season is almost over. There is no rational reason to clot-shot any child, let alone a child under the age of five and infants. Do your own due diligence before subjecting your child to the risks associated with an investigational gene therapy treatment. Thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you.
Now we will try Cassie Walworth again, virtually, and then we will have Andrew Cross in-person. Cassie Walworth.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you very much. Okay. Cassie Walworth, Alath, I've been here before. I do not know what's in Fritos, Manwich, Hamburger Helper. I don't have any clue of the ingredients. I don't know what any of those mean, and I still eat them. I trust the FDA. Two-thirds of Americans support wearing masks, and that is including in schools, according to several polls. So far, there is no evidence to support that masks can interfere with young children's brain development, or disruption to their social, emotional learning, literacy, or speech. Seeing isn't a prerequisite for learning to speak. Children who have visual impairments still learn to speak. Masking is part of some religious organizations. They also show no delay. One study shows that two-year-olds can still recognize words through masks. Another study from before the pandemic found that children three to eight have no trouble identifying expressions through masks. Most fascinating study of all, preschoolers found that they made more complex speech sounds when wearing masks. There is one small but important group that may struggle with wearing masks, and that is children with special needs and strong sensory activities. But this is a reason for masking, not against. When others wear masks, it protects those who can't do it well or consistently. And this is especially true for immunocompromised children and adults. If schools stopped masking over unfounded fears, these children would be forced to stay home. This violates those children's rights. When we have clear, data-driven policies for masks, we can go back on again. However, there are only 22% of five-to-11-year-olds that are vaccinated nationwide. Please keep the mask policy. Lastly, the Kansas Policy Institute is run by financiers, not scientists.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have Andrew Cross. Andrew Cross.
Good morning. This is a public meeting again, so I'm glad about that. Maybe I am visible on this broadcast. When I came here, you had more sheriff personnel than the public that showed up. After this, I will be seeking a list of the county spending transactions from the Lockt County manager's office after this. I believe those are public record, if I'm not mistaken. But thank you for your time, and thank you for having it public again.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
That completes our public speakers for public comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have two notes for the record this morning. I will be signing the following in agreement with the city of Prairie Village for the public improvement of Knoll Avenue from 79th Street to 83rd Street, and administrative resolution number WD 22-010, enlarging the privately-financed sewer district and provide for the assessment of all applicable fees, charges, and levies of the consolidated main sewer district in the vicinity of 175th Street and Flum Road. That concludes the notes for the record. We'll move to the consent agenda. Would the clerk please read the proposed consent agenda?
Item number one, consider approving the January 20, 2022 business session minutes. Item number two, consider approving the reappointment of James R. Neese, 6th District Representative of the Planning Commission, through October 4, 2024. Item number three, consider approving the reappointment of Dave Johns, 6th District Representative of the Planning Commission, through October 4, 2024. And item number four, consider approving the reappointment of Randy Hutchins, 6th District Representative of the Planning Commission, through October 4, 2024.
Is there any commissioner who would like to have an item considered separately? If not, do I hear a motion?
No.
Ms. Allenbrand.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Do I hear a second?
Hanslick, second.
Allenbrand made the motion. Hanslick seconded the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, yes.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. We have six votes in favor. Motion carried. Next item, action agenda. I believe it's item number five.
Item number five, IFB number 2022-010. Consider authorizing a contract with Dell Technologies for the purchase of government-cloud-Microsoft enterprise agreement in the amount not to exceed $1,045,681.02 annually for a three-year agreement.
Mr. Nixon.
Good morning. Bill Nixon from Technology and Innovation. This request is to renew our Microsoft Office 365 agreement, which includes Microsoft products such as Outlook, Teams, Word, Excel, and PowerPoint. The prior agreement was made in 2019 for three years and has expired. This agreement covers county employees, including everybody supported by DTI and GEMS, along with library parks and some of the entities that we provide support for, such as Evergreen Living, CFD II, and the Extension Council. These supported entities, along with library and parks, will be invoiced for their share of the costs. We had planned to renew this contract under the Kansas contract, but decided to go out to forbid, and we estimated we saved or avoided about $110,000 by going out for bid. In this bid, we asked for pricing for three options. For year one, we're going to go ahead with option one, which is sort of the as-is option with the products that we currently have. We may consider different options in year two and three, depending on how the funding goes for the 2023 and 2024 budget. This bid was reviewed by 13 vendors. Five had responded. One of the vendors had to withdraw due to pricing errors, and the range of costs varied by about 4%. The lowest cost is with Dell Technologies, which we have an existing relationship with for PC purchases. Also, as part of our due diligence, we considered alternatives to Microsoft Office and looked at Google Workspace, which is the biggest competitor. And we estimate Google would cost about an extra $300,000 a year in terms of licensing costs, and probably about $3 million to switch over, get everybody retrained, and things like that. So we think this is the most cost-effective approach for the county. And I'd like to thank Robin Lines, the purchasing manager and Raddick from DTI, who really, at the last minute, pulled together the bid process as we were looking at the pricing. And I stand for questions.
Very good. Good a report. Questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to offer Mr. Nixon. Very well presented. I appreciate you taking the extra step, considering the Kansas contract and other options out there, and also the step of looking at Google in terms of competitive advantage for the existing vendor. So good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Fast.
Yeah, does this contract include, so each of, like, employees' cell phones, too, or is this just stationary laptops? I mean, do you have to buy, then, a license for each cell? I mean, how?
Yeah. So with this license, because we're doing the cloud product, it's licensed by user. So you might have Microsoft Office on your phone for county business. That's included in the pricing. If we did other options with Microsoft, we'd have to pay by device. This is a per-user license.
So like, I, my laptop here, and then my phone, and be?
Correct. All that's covered. In addition, there's an employee purchase program. So if you want to purchase Microsoft products for home use, there's a 20% or 30% discount, which we have advertised on the county internal website.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Nixon, I want to thank you about Commissioner Ashcraft. I really appreciate you and your team for being able to have all the opportunities and you being so amazing, really, and now, after the vaccine, it's all over. So, thank you so much for doing this.
Thank you.
Did we have anyone who wished to speak to this item?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. It's back for the commission. A motion would be in order. Ms. Hanslick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to authorize a contract with Dell Technologies for the purchase of government-cloud-Microsoft enterprise agreement in the amount not to exceed $1,045,681.02 annually for a three-year agreement.
Ms. Fast, second. Hanslick made the motion. Fast seconded the motion to approve the contract as recommended with Dell. Any further questions or comments? Ms. O'Hara, did you have one?
I don't have any, but thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Allenbrand, could you please make sure that your mic is turned on? The green light should be bright.
Sorry.
Thank you. Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. I have six votes in favor. Motion carried. Item number six.
RFP number 2021-074. Consider authorizing a contract with Renaissance Infrastructure Consulting, RLC, LLC, for the survey and design for Mission Road reconstruction from Orchard Lane to 179th Terrace at a cost not to exceed $474,696.
Mr. Vogts.
Good morning. I'm Jeff Vogts with Public Works. This issue is requesting approval for the contract to survey and design Mission Road from Orchard Lane to 179th Terrace. The goals for this project include improving safety for all road users, including vehicles and bicycles, by making some minor alignment improvements, adding shoulders, clear zones, eliminating edge drop-offs, and improving drainage. Preserving the character of the corridor and being sensitive to environmental issues is important as well. And also, we will be working with Parks and Rec to assist with their projects in the area. There is an error in the briefing sheet at the bottom of the analysis section that said that the fee proposal were submitted by six finalists. That should read "Fee Proposal Submitted by Both Finalists." For this RFP, purchasing policy procedures were followed, and Renaissance Infrastructure Consulting has been selected to be awarded the contract, and I will answer any questions.
Mr. Vogts, this is for design. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Vogts, just clarification, and I appreciate you noting the typographical error in terms of the range of finalists. But the range that's listed goes up to 424, but the actual is for 474. Could you help us understand why the actual is more than what the fee proposal submitted, that was submitted?
Yes. We started out with the basic standard scope for all the consultants to use in feeding the project to be able to get an apples-to-apples comparison of their pricing. During the interview process, we did come up with some additional items that we wanted to add into that scope, and so those negotiations were made after the selection was made.
Thank you. Ms. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what's the process to make sure that the public is involved and that their concerns, as far as the ambiance of the area, is maintained? This is a very scenic area, and absolutely improvements do need to be made. I ride my bike in that area, and definitely, safety for bicyclists and any pedestrians is definitely needed improvements. But are there, is there a process for the public to be involved in their comments as to what they wish to see in that area?
Certainly, we will be working with every property owner along the road as we move through the process, so they automatically will get some input. Other than that, if people have specific concerns, we're more than happy to discuss those with them. And if we need to do a public information meeting at some point, we would be more than willing to do that as well.
Yeah, I think a public information meeting would be very helpful in that area. And I think that Commissioner Fast agrees with that. So if there's a way that we can get the word out to folks that live in that area, that this engineering is going to be done, surveyed, and that their input is welcome at this point, I think that transparency is extremely important. And maybe some good ideas will come out within this framework.
Yeah, I do want to say that we need to get partway through the process before we're ready to do that, so it won't be immediate. It'll probably be sometime near to the end of this year before we would be ready to do that.
Okay. Well, I always like to have the public involved upfront before county money has been spent, and that it's prohibitive to take into consideration what the public is, input has to offer. I believe that Commissioner--
Understood.
Okay. I believe that Commissioner Fast probably has some comments on this, too.
Well, Commissioner Fast.
Yeah. I mean, my district doesn't go as far south as this, but I have a lot of that Southern Leewood. And I know, because I've met with the different homeowners associations, and this was a real concern for them. And I think what's confusing is that you have Leewood, you have Overland Park, and then you have the unincorporated. So people really don't have an-- So people really don't have an understanding, is it the increased traffic load Overland Park, or is it Leewood, or is it us? And I think, you know, and that Mission Road, there's all this development off of 175th. So, I mean, it's growing development, and so people still have this vision of this rural life, and that's rapidly changing. And so I got, you know, I have some of the names of my homeowner association. Commissioner, you live right off...
O'Hara.
...Mission Road. So, I mean, I would be very willing to work with you on this.
Thank you. I have one other comment.
This portion of Mission Road is in the unincorporated area. We have made some, I would call them minor, safety improvements in the past several years, but with the increase in volume of traffic on this stretch of Mission Road, I think it's important to keep in mind that public safety of those using, whether it's bicycles or drivers, that has to be our priority. Ms. O'Hara.
Thank you. So I will answer that question, Commissioner Fast, about jurisdictions. So it goes, it's... Leewood ends at approximately, well, ends at 155th Street on Mission, and then it trends, transitions to Overland Park, which then that goes down to just before the railroad tracks at a south of 159th. Then it transitions to county, and then when it gets back out further, it's still actually... On the east side, it is Overland Park, south of 175th Street. So it's, or south of 183rd Street, I believe. Anyway, it's rather confusing, and there's multi-jurisdictions. And the reason for that big section in between where Overland Park resumes at 183rd Street is that there's an island annexation in Overland Park that was approved by the county years and years ago, and that's created a lot of expenses for the county to improve that section of road that's between those two isolations of Overland Park. So anyway, yes, and we did have a... It was not just a little improvement on Mission Road, and that is approximately just north of 171st Street. There's a major bridge that was put in and badly needed, because that road was really just hanging off the edge of the hill, and that was completed, I think, about three years ago. So I, this is really an extremely important project, but we need to make sure that we take care to get the public's input. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Did we have anybody who wished to comment on this item?
No, sir.
If not, it's back for the Commission. A motion would be in order. Ms. Hanslick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to authorize a contract with Renaissance Infrastructure Consulting, RLC LLC, for the survey and design for Mission Road reconstruction from Orchard Lane to 179th Terrace at a cost not to exceed $474,696 per RFP number 2021-074.
Allenbrand, second.
Hanslick made the motion. Allenbrand seconded the motion to award the contract as recommended. Any further questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. I have six votes in favor. Motion carried. Next item.
IFB number 2021-043. Consider authorizing a contract with Hammond Asphalt Paving, Incorporated, for payment improvements at New Century Adult Detention Center, NCA DC, located at 27745 West 159th Street, New Century, Kansas, 66031. Sheriff Operations Building, SHROPS, located at 27747 West 159th Street, New Century, Kansas, 66031, and Adult Residential Center, Number One and Number Three, located at 101 Roland Park Drive, New Century, Kansas, 66031, in an amount not to exceed $303,000.
Mr. Reinhardt.
Good morning, Chairman Ilert and Commissioners. I'm Brad Reinhardt with Facilities Management. The scope of this contract includes numerous asphalt and concrete surface improvements at three county facilities, which are in close proximity out at New Century. The first one is the Sheriff's Operations, where we will implement several areas of curb and gutter replacement. The parking lot there will be crack-filled and seal-coated and new striping applied. At the New Century Adult Detention Center, a service road running along the west and the south of the facility will be crack-filled and seal-coated. In addition, there's a parking lot at New Century, ADC, which will also be crack-filled, seal-coated, and restriped. Finally, the Arc One and Three facilities, we're doing a two-inch mill and asphalt overlay in the parking lot out in front of Arc One. The entry drive leading into this parking lot will be crack-filled and seal-coated, and there's a couple of sections of sidewalk around each facility which will be replaced. And then there's some grading and drainage improvements, excuse me, grading and drainage improvements associated with the work there. These projects were approved as part of the 2020 CIP. Fourteen firms viewed the IFB, and seven responsive bids were received. Hammond Asphalt Paving, Incorporated, is recommended to receive this contract due to their lowest bid submission. We did have one bidding firm withdraw from consideration after their bid was submitted, and the contract amount will be for $303,000 for all of this work at these three facilities. And our design consultant, Phelps Engineering, provided an opinion of cost in the amount of $408,738, and we've had experience with Hammond's, and they've performed well, and so I recommend approval of this contract. And with that, I'd be happy to stand for questions.
Thank you. Questions of Mr. Reinhardt. Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Reinhardt, briefing sheet was in good order. I appreciate the steps you took. A question I sometimes ask, we seem to do a lot of asphalt work, and we have a lot of facilities. Have we ever considered looking at the cost-benefit of trying to have a crew on staff, if that would be in long-term cost-beneficial? Has that ever been considered?
I don't believe it's been given serious consideration, certainly not during my time here. My initial concerns on that would be the investment required for equipment, and then the downtime you might have during the winter in implementing this type of project. But we can consider that further. I'm just kind of going off the top of my head, but those are my initial thoughts on that.
No, I understand, and I'm not necessarily advocating it, but just because we have such volume, and you're absolutely right, for the asphalt overlay equipment and the grinder to remove old asphalt, that is an investment, but some organizations, some communities have done it in-house, and I was just wondering if we'd ever considered it.
Chairman, this is Penny, County Manager. I know Brian Peadig has evaluated that. He and his team have evaluated that over time. I don't know when the last time they looked at it, but they have, and they've had various crews for certain things, and then continually look at which is better, contractor crews, based on workload, up and downs, and things like that.
Absolutely, and that's what you should do. I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you. Other questions? Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When you have, when you're ready for it, I do have a motion.
Do we have... Ms. Hanslick.
I just wanted to say, thank you for the report, Mr. Reinhardt. I was down at the ARC a month or so ago, and I can attest that this is well, is very much needed, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Did we have anyone who wished to speak to this item?
No, sir.
All right. If not, a motion is in order. Commissioner Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to authorize a contract with Hammond Asphalt Paving, Inc., for the pavement improvement at New Century Adult Attention Center, NCA DC, located at 27745 West 159th Street, New Century, Kansas, 66031. Sheriff Operations Building, SHROPS, located at 27747 West 159th Street, New Century, Kansas, 66031, and the Dalton Residential Centers, Number One and Number Three, located at 101 Roland Park Drive, New Century, Kansas, 66031, not to exceed the amount of $303,000.
Commissioner Fast, second.
Allenbrand made the motion. Commissioner Fast seconded the motion, authorizing the contract as recommended for the work as identified in the motion. Any further questions or comments? Ms. Fast.
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight that it's at 101 Roland Park Drive.
Did you not know that?
All right. Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. I have six votes in favor. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number eight. Consider authorizing the purchase of various fleet vehicles and equipment from competitively solicited contracts in an amount not to exceed $6,205,257.
Mr. Butler.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chris Butler, Director of Fleet Services. I'm in front of you today, asking for approval of the annual request to, request for authority to purchase vehicles and equipment for Fleet Services. Little background, in 2018, Fleet Services began the management of the Fleet Equipment Reserve Fund. As part of fund development, most of the fleet fund, or fleet assets, were transferred into the Fleet Fund. The departments agreed to the transfer of departmental funds, both one-time and ongoing, to the Fleet Equipment Reserve Fund in order to support future vehicle and equipment replacement needs. Fleet meets with departments in order to, sorry, Fleet Services meets with departments to ensure the vehicles meet utilization requirements, and that any units falling below minimum use standards are vetted to confirm the need for replacement. All units identified to be replaced exceed their recommended life cycle. In 2019, Fleet Services expanded our customer base to include MEDAC and the library, and at that time, we also began working a little more closely with the Johnson County Sheriff's Fleet Division. As a result, this request also reflects planned purchases for each of those respected offices and agencies. Fleet utilizes cooperative bids and proposals for the purchase of various vehicles and pieces of equipment. A number of those are listed in the briefing sheet. Prior to purchase, Fleet Services will solicit vendors to ensure contract pricing represents the current best pricing for each unit, including all options with those vehicles and pieces of equipment. We meet regular, regularly, with the user departments to ensure that the replacement vehicles and equipment meet the needs of the departments in order to deliver the services to their stakeholders. When possible, replacement alternatives, including unit reduction, shared-use pool vehicles, and mileage reimbursement are considered in lieu of replacement. Replacement units for the Sheriff's Department are independently assessed through the Sheriff's Fleet Division to ensure that replacement vehicles and equipment meet the needs of their office. There's a table that is listed on the briefing sheet, which kind of goes through the departments and different fund areas, the planned replacement units and estimated replacement costs. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Questions of Mr. Butler. Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I wanted to expand a little bit on what Mr. Butler just offered. I think he gives himself short shrift when it comes to the changes that, under his leadership, this function has seen in the last eight or nine years. Before the attempt to consolidate these efforts, it was quite decentralized and a little bit chaotic, and I think there were some financial ramifications. So I want to commend Mr. Butler for his efforts, and I know they're ongoing. I know it's not fully consolidated, but I know that the sheriff and Parks and Rec and airports are working more closely, and I think they are seeing the benefits of it. So I just wanted to say, good job. The one question I had, and since this is probably the biggest single expenditure your department does annually, or periodically, is the funding set up as an internal service fund, or is it independently allocated, and then the vehicles are expensed against that? And when I say internal service funds, some organizations, the individual operating departments hold the monies, and it gives them some leverage and some stake at what is purchased and when in order to make sure that the vehicles are used as effectively and as efficiently as possible. And that's just a question, and if you'd like to answer that offline, that would be fine.
You bet. I can answer that, kind of briefly answer that if you would like me to.
Please.
The independent agencies, and I'll use wastewater as an example, we work with them to coordinate all of the purchases and go through the same process for the replacement schedules and replacement cycles that we do with anyone else. Since they are independent within their fund, they do not transfer their funds into the Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund. Fleet Services as a whole is an internal service fund. The Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund is within our, within our purview under that.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Ms. Hanslick.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Butler. I just wanted to mention, I was really excited earlier this week to read that the Ford plant up in the Northland is starting to deliver some of its new e-transit vans, and I hope that we will consider electric vehicles to the extent possible, including vans, if those are on our list of needs. I know that you and I've talked about that and that you're looking at that, but I was excited, because that benefits people in our area who work at that plant, too. So I just wanted to make mention of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. I appreciate that. I did not know that they were delivering, or that they were starting on those e-transit vans. We're yet to get pricing on that. We just recently got pricing on their Lightnings, Ford Lightning pickups. We're going to be considering some of those in our replacement cycle, and I will look at the vans as well.
They looked, they looked pretty competitive with the price. It says here, suggested retail price of $43,295. So you can follow up on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fast.
Yeah, when you say life cycle, what are you, is that based on miles? I mean, what determines a life cycle? Because I know, like, law enforcement cars idle a lot, which makes it, you know, die quicker.
That's a very good point. We look at the life cycle, generally, we look at life cycle based upon the classification of vehicle or the type of vehicle, whether it's eight years, 100,000 miles for a sedan, or a light SUV, or a light-duty pickup, and that's just where we start to look at it. At that eight years or 100,000 miles, whichever comes first, we will start to give consideration to those. We do track some of our units on hours. While we don't have the Sheriff's Department, I don't know if they're going mileage or hours, we do track a lot of our wastewater units by hours, because what you'll find is, well, we want to be aware of idling and things along those lines. A lot of times, they'll have to set up over top of a manhole. They'll drive out there, and those vehicles will just run, and run because of the operations that they're doing. So we're tracking those based on hours. So it really just depends upon what type of vehicle, where that suggested life cycle falls.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? All right. Is there anyone who desired to speak to this item?
No, sir.
All right. It's back for the Commission. A motion would be in order. Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to authorize a purchase of various fleet vehicles and equipment from competitively solicited contacts in the amount not to exceed $6,205,257. Did I say that right?
Hanslick, second.
Commissioner Hanslick made the motion, excuse me, Commissioner Allenbrand made the motion. Hanslick seconded the motion to approve the authorization in regards to the purchase of fleet various vehicles through our fleet department, as noted. Any further questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. Six votes in favor. Motion carried.
Thank you all. Be well.
Next item, number nine.
Request for Proposal RFP 2021-071. Consider authorizing a term and supply contract with RE Pedrati Company, Incorporated, for SCADA Supervi- RE Padrahi Company, Inc., for SCADA Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System Maintenance and Integration Services for Johnson County Wastewater, in a total annual amount not to exceed $1 million for a one-year term, with the option to renew annually for up to four one-year terms.
Mr. Witt?
Morning, Chairman Commissioners. Aaron Witt with Wastewater. No funding is being requested as part of this action. This is for a contract warrant only. Johnson County Wastewater uses SCADA to monitor wastewater treatment plant processes and alert staff when critical equipment fails or operates outside of defined ranges. SCADA also alerts staff to issues at remote pump station and enables staff to respond in a timely manner. We use integration services to both program and edit computers that run the logic to automate the wastewater treatment processes. And integration also includes the networking of computers to the SCADA system. We do not have the expertise to perform all the required services in-house, and we've historically used an outside contractor to perform these services. As a result, the Request for Proposal was issued on October 25, 2021, by purchasing. The RFP was posted on the county's bidding site, Ion Wave, on Drexel Plan Room, and published in the Alathan News. Two proposals were received on December 1, 2021, and an evaluation committee consisting of wastewater staff and Department of Technology and Innovation staff evaluated the proposals. Both firms were shortlisted, and interviews were held on December 20, 2021. Firms were evaluated on their approach, proposed staff, firm experience, staff utilization and cost. Details are shown in the table in the briefing sheet, along with the rankings, which are in the parentheses in the table. Three sample projects were included in the RFP for the cost evaluation, which was based on total cost of the three projects. The sample projects are typical of what would be completed under this contract, and as part of the cost submittal, the finalists provided hourly rates for the different personnel classifications, as well as percentage markups on materials. And the rates and markups that were submitted are part of the contract. The selection committee recommends awarding to RE Padrahi Company. They do have previous experience with the county and have performed well. Purchasing agrees with this recommendation. The contract is a maximum not to exceed $1 million for one year, with up to four one-year renewals. And again, no funding is requested as part of this action. We would return to the board to request funding associated with projects that will be completed under this contract. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Okay, questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Witt, just a couple of questions. The, the firm that was not selected, the Black Rock, have they ever done any work for us?
Not that I can recall recently. I know that they have bid on some of our contracts.
Okay, okay. I'm just being curious. And the seven firms reviewed the RFP. I'm just wondering, do we ever, do we have any kind of process in place when we, we have a number of firms that review, but only basically the existing provider offering a, a, I need to pick the term well, the best option available. Do we ever do any follow-up with those firms to see if there's a reason why they didn't submit, and if there's anything we might do differently or better to pique their interest?
Yeah, I'm not aware of a formal process for that follow-up. Occasionally, we do follow-up on that. I'm not aware that we did that on this particular project.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? All right, do we have anyone who wishes to speak to this item?
No, sir.
All right, the motion would be in order.
Chair?
Ms. Hanslick?
Yes, thank you. I'd be glad to make that motion. I move that the Board of County Commissioners authorize a term and supply contract to RE Padrahi Company, Inc., for SCADA System Maintenance and Integration Services for Johnson County Wastewater, in a total annual amount not to exceed $1 million for a one-year term, with the option to renew annually for up to four one-year terms, per RFP 2021-071.
Allen Brand, second.
Hanslick made the motion. Allen Brand seconded the motion to authorize the term and supply contract with the Padrahi Organization, in the amount noted, and for the, for the renewal periods as stated. Any further questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Witt, I'm sorry, just, just to follow on, if I could. I understand that some of these costs potentially are hard costs for equipment and software, but, but some are for soft cost, personnel expertise and so forth. Over the term of this agreement, at a million dollars a year, that's $5 million. And I was just wondering, have we ever investigated trying to develop our in-house expertise to minimize or doubtful, but potentially eliminate those costs, making it more cost beneficial to do it in-house? Has that ever been considered?
Yes, we have considered that, and we've looked at it. This is highly specialized work and very competitive out there in the market, especially right now. This is also a very large contract, so all six of our facilities are 32 pump stations, 24/7 service, so it does take a considerable amount of staff to be able to manage this contract. Having said that, we are looking at bringing on a person to help us manage this, and would be able to do some of the programming that's not in that emergency mode. So, we are looking at a position to be able to help with this.
Okay, thank you.
I should note also that, you know, the options are to renew annually for four years, so those items can be looked at again. Any other comments or questions? If not, the motion is before us. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Faust?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Hara?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand?
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Ilert, aye. I have six votes in favor. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number 10, Resolution Number WD-22-001, conduct a public hearing and consider authorizing funding for the construction phase of the Turkey Creek Wastewater Treatment Facility Miscellaneous Improvements Project, SMTC-Contract 42, in an amount not to exceed $2,807,760, increasing the total Nelson Wastewater Treatment Facility Project Authorization to $25,541,160.
This is a public hearing. Public hearing is open. Mr. Witt?
Aaron Witt, Wastewater. The Turkey Creek Treatment Facility makes up half of our Nelson facility that's located near I-35 and Lamar. Linda, I think we have a figure. If you could help me with that? Thank you. So, the yellow boundary is the boundary for our entire Nelson Treatment Facility, and the red hatched area is the focus of this project and the funding request. We spoke about this project a couple of weeks ago during our Committee of the Whole on Nelson. This portion of the facility will need to operate in, or through 2029, when the new facility comes online, and this improvement project will help minimize the risk of failure and enhance operation and maintenance during this period of construction. The project has been designed and bids were opened on December 17, 2021. Award of the construction contract is the next agenda item. The amount requested is $2,807,760. Engineering construction phase services will be provided by George Butler Associates, previously selected through an RFP process for this type of work, and this project was included in our most recent financial plan presented in May of 2021. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Mr. Witt, this is a very large project in total. Can you remind us of the timeframe from beginning to end, estimated?
Yes, so we're in design phase right now. We do have this early construction project to help us get through that time period, but the main construction of the facility will happen from 2024 to 2029.
Over that five-year period?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. O'Hara?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I saw some new numbers on the estimates on the total cost of Nelson improvements, reconstruction, and it's well over 500,000 now. It was at 426, and now it's well over 500,000, I mean, 500 million. Three zeros, last three zeros there, sorry. Can you tell me what the estimate is now?
Yes, our application for the WIFIA loan is 574 million.
Okay, I thought it was right at 575. Okay. I, I just want to remind the, the Commission that hundreds of millions of dollars are being invested by the public, and I have brought up previously my desire to have the Board approve our audit department to do audits of the contracts, which within Mr. Heflin's, having conversed with Mr. Heflin, our auditor, chief auditor, that he said that we definitely have that capability within our, our, our county. And so, I just, again, would urge the Commission to consider to have an audit done on 2021, and then just have annual audits because of the vast amount of money that is being poured into these projects. So, that's my, that's, that's my comment.
Okay, thank you very much. I would simply note this, there have been, over the past 10 or 12 years, several audits involving wastewater activities and construction, and so it's important, and those will continue as needed. Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of questions, but to Commissioner O'Hara's point, I, I would submit that that is a fair observation, and given the fact that this is probably one of the most critical pieces of infrastructure that we deal with in the county, to provide those assurances is not unreasonable. It would be a substantial undertaking, and I would be interested to learn what the new county auditor, how he would frame that and pursue that. So, I just offer that as an observation. To, to my question, to Mr., excuse me, Mr. Witt, you've indicated that Turkey Creek, this portion will need to operate through 2029, and I know that the transition is complicated, and that in part impacts the total cost. But I was just wondering, if we were not to do this at this time, what would be the ramifications? What would happen if we did not try to address these, I'm going to say short-term, I mean, it's not very short-term, but these, this limited term improvement?
Yeah, we'd be risking permit violations and water quality impairment by, by failure of assets. And then, when they failed, then it would be emergency repaired, so it'd be much more expensive at that time.
Okay, thank you.
I, this is, as I recall, our oldest system in the county. Is it 75 years or 75-plus?
It's mid, mid 1940s when we started construction.
I mean, it seems to me rather obvious if this facility should cease to function in part or in total. The impact on the community would be really overwhelming. Other comments or questions? All right, did we have anyone who wished to speak?
No, sir.
All right. The public hearing is closed. The item is back before the commission. A motion would be in order.
I can make the motion.
Commissioner Faust?
I move the Board adopt Resolution Number WD-22-001, authorizing funding for the construction phase of the Turkey Creek Wastewater Treatment Facility Miscellaneous Project, SMTC, Contract 42, in amount not to exceed $2,807,760, increasing the total Nelson Wastewater Treatment Facility Project Authorization to $25,41,160.
Hanslick, second.
Commissioner Faust made the motion, and Commissioner Hanslick seconded the motion to authorize the expenditures in regards to the Turkey Creek Plant, as noted and recommended. Any further questions or comments? If not, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Faust?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Hara?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand?
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Ilert, aye. I have six votes in favor. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number 11, Invitation for Bid Number 2021-065, consider authorizing a contract with Crossland Heavy Contractors, Inc., to construct the Turkey Creek Wastewater Treatment Facility Miscellaneous Improvements Project, SMTC-Contract 42, in an amount not to exceed $2,145,500.
Mr. Witt, this is a companion piece to the item we just approved. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right.
Aaron Witt with Wastewater. Project bids were opened on December 17, 2021. The project was advertised in the local paper, posted on the county's electronic bidding site, Ion Wave, as well as Drexel Plan Room. Three firms responded to the bid. Crossland Heavy Contractors provided the lowest responsive bid of $2,145,500. George Butler Associates, the design engineer, reviewed the bids and recommends them for award. JCW staff agrees with this recommendation. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Questions of Mr. Witt? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I had the opportunity to visit with Mr. Witt and his staff a little bit yesterday, and I asked him this question, so I'll ask again just for a point of conversation. They use a mechanism called the Opinion of Probable Construction Cost. The acronym is something akin to OPEC, which I'm sure is not intentional, but I was, this one, the, the opinion is about 38% higher than the actual, and then later on in the agenda, it's almost the opposite. And I was just wondering, is this really an opinion of probable cost or more possible cost? And I was wondering, do they ever provide a range to get some sense? Because you look at this and you go, well, the, the probable cost estimates are, are way off, and I'm sure that's not the intent, but for decision-makers to use it as a judge, how do, how do we know it's within, within reason, for lack of a better term?
That is a good question, and when we're looking at the, at the number we have, and so they're providing this number in later stages of, of design, or various stages of design, so that we can get a feel for how does that look compared to what our budget is, and can we, is there anything that we need to do differently from that perspective? And we can use that number for two things. One, when we get those bids, are we okay from a budget perspective? But the second thing is to be able to ask those questions. What's the difference between the opinion of probable cost that we had from the engineer and the bids that we're receiving? Was there some level of risk? Is there something else that we're not understanding? We can have that conversation and be able to make decisions based on that. So, from that perspective, the number, even though it is, is a number, we're kind of looking at it from that, that range perspective that you're, you're talking about.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Ms. O'Hara?
Again, I just want to see if there is a consensus among the Board to have a conversation with Mr. Heflin, our county auditor, to see, to see his comfort level of doing a financial audit on contracts. Again, I visited with him, and he assured me that that was within the capabilities of the office. I know that we are primarily focused on performance audits, but I think for transparency and the fact of the matter that there is issues within the clerk of the district court, that it would behoove our Board to be as transparent as possible. Thank you.
Well, I think, I think we need to understand, you know, the terminology that we're using. Financial audits are one thing, and performance and compliance audits are another. We do those performance and compliance audits and contracts, et cetera, would be part of that process. So, yes, as noted earlier, we have completed several audits on wastewater, and we will continue to do so as work progresses. Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Hanslick?
Yes, no, I, I appreciate the conversation, and was going to, to say something similar to what you said, Chair, that my understanding is that during the, the regular annual financial audits, that all of these issues are, are looked at. I don't I don't know if Commissioner O'Hara is looking for something particular or something in addition to what the financial audit does, but I do know that we do have those regular audits.
Okay. Do we have a motion on this item, Ms. Faust?
I move the Board of County Commissioners authorize a contract with Crossline Heavy Contractors, Inc. to construct the Turkey Creek wastewater treatment facility miscellaneous improvement project SMTC-contract 42 in amount not to exceed $2,145,500 per invitation for bid number 2021-065.
Hanslick, second.
Commissioner Faust made the motion. Commissioner Hanslick seconded the motion to authorize the contract as recommended and in the amount noted. Any further questions or comments? Mr. Ashcraft.
Mr. Chairman, just to weigh in, we had kind of this parallel conversation going on and you're absolutely right. There's a little bit of challenge for us to understand the difference in some of the terminology we use when it comes to audits. I don't believe, and Commissioner O'Hara, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe she's asking for the internal auditor to do an opinion financial audit as the external auditor does and has to do and should do. I think she's searching for a level of compliance that you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, as an area of interest and concern that internal auditors often pursue. So I would suggest there's probably not much disagreement, but I still would like to know what the auditor himself would like to say.
Well, in conversations with the new chief auditor, I think he understands. In conversations with Mr. Heflin, I think he completely understands.
Okay, very good.
Obviously, that will be part of the review of the audit committee, which would bring to the full commission.
Very good, thank you.
Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we hear loud and clear Commissioner O'Hara and Commissioner Ashcraft and that we'll look into this. You know, there's already been audits being done, but we do regular audits on an ongoing. So I think everybody understands that. I just, you know, echoing Commissioner Hanslick and the chairman, so we understand that.
All right, thank you very much. Any further questions, Ms. O'Hara?
Yes, this is in the specific areas of contracts with the wastewater district. And again, I've visited with Mr. Heflin and he felt very comfortable that his office could delve into that. And this is a very detailed audit that would be done. And so I just think that we need to consider that because this is hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars that's going to be going through our county, through the wastewater district and expenditures. And we just need to be extremely careful of the public's money, so, thank you.
That's always the case and as I've indicated before, the audit committee will examine that in conjunction with Mr. Heflin. Thank you. Any other comments? If not, clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. I have six votes, motion carried. Next item.
Item number 12, resolution number WD-22-004. Conduct a public hearing and consider authorizing funding for the construction phase of the Metcalf and 103rd Interceptor Relocation and Capacity Improvements Project ICM-1-contract 22 in an amount not to exceed $8,551,400, increasing the total project authorization to $9,025,400.
Public hearing is open, Mr. Witt.
Aaron Witt with Wastewater. This funding request is for sewer relocation and capacity improvements in the area of 103rd and Metcalf. As you can see on the figure here, the existing sewers are shown in the light blue and red and generally the sewers run and flow to the east and serve the north and south side of 103rd Street. The flow from this area is treated at our Tomahawk facility. Back in 2019, we did have to do a temporary repair along the creek, as you can see from the red circle just on the northwest side of 103rd and Metcalf area. And so this is a very difficult area to construct, so we did that temporary repair to buy some time to figure out the right long-term solution. And what we've come up with and what we're proposing are the purple sewers that you see on the map, so that'll collect the flow, come down to the south side of 103rd and then flow across and go on to the Tomahawk facility. It did take us a little bit of extra time to work through the design process and bid phase as we worked through easement acquisition with this new alignment. But the design is complete and bids were opened on December 21, 2021. Award of the construction contract is the next agenda item. The amount requested is $8,551,400. Engineering and construction phase services will be provided by Burns &amp; McDonald, previously selected through RFP process for this type of work. And this project was included in the most recent financial plan presented in May of 2021. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Mr. Witt, it seemed the major change in this particular situation is that the piping will move to the south side of 103rd Street, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And also the size of the piping will increase to handle the flow?
That's right. As part of this, it was not only just taking care of that at-risk area in the streamway, but we did, from our modeling, we do have some capacity issues in this area, so we were able to take care of it as part of this project and we did upsize the sewer to be able to handle that flow.
Thank you. Questions, Ms. Hanslick.
Yes, thank you. Since this is in my district, I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Witt and Ms. Pekerek yesterday, excuse me, because this is a highly traveled intersection. It's a very complicated intersection because you have Indian Creek there with all of the extra challenges that that poses. And I wanted to just check in with them to make sure what the accommodations were to make sure businesses and homes would still be accessible. And they very much reassured me. We went through a lot of the details in terms of the timeline for the project and how those interruptions would be minimized. And also assured me about they're working with the city of Overland Park and how they're going to be routing traffic to keep that disruption to a minimum. So I appreciate that, I appreciate your reassuring me about that and look forward to this project going forward and being done. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this isn't in my district, but I'm well aware of where this is and I want to echo Commissioner Hanslick. I appreciate you and your staff taking a proactive to increase the risk of any future default because, you know, that's taking a look at future needs and, you know, when things are working well, we don't hear a whole lot, but when something's not working, it's a big issue. So I really appreciate you doing that, so thank you.
Okay, other questions? Ms. Hanslick.
Yes, I want to just follow up and mention that I really, one of the things I especially appreciated is that Johnson County Wastewater is planning to have a website for this project later when there's more details so that the public can look at that and see where potential reroutes might be occurring and they can act accordingly. So I wanted to mention that, I appreciate that.
Yes, we will have considerable public outreach as part of this project.
Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Witt, just to refresh my memory, the sanitary line that's being abandoned south of 103rd, is it under capacity or beyond repair? I understand trying to get away from the creek area, so I get that, but just the south part, what's the story behind that?
Sure, and that sewer was constructed in 1966.
Closer to the microphone, Mr. Witt.
That sewer was constructed in 1966 or that timeframe, so it is an older sewer. So that was part of the evaluation is what is the right way to be able to convey flows, including the extra flows to the facility?
Very good, thank you.
Other questions? Do we have anyone who wishes to speak to this item?
No, sir.
Public hearing is closed, it's back before the commission, a motion is in order. Ms. Hanslick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the board adopt resolution number WD-22004 authorizing funds for the construction phase of the Metcalf and 103rd Interceptor Relocation and Capacity Improvements Project ICM-1-contract 22 in an amount not to exceed $8,551,400, increasing the total project authorization to $9,025,400.
Allenbrand, second.
Commissioner Hanslick made the motion, Allenbrand seconded the motion to authorize funding for the project as identified and recommended in an amount not to exceed the stated amount in the motion. Any further questions or comments? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. I have six votes in favor, motion carried. Next item.
Item number 13, invitation for bid number 2020-038. Consider authorizing a contract with Infrastructure Solutions LLC to construct the Metcalf and 103rd Interceptor Relocation and Capacity Improvements Project ICM-1-contract 22 in an amount not to exceed $7,40,800.
Mr. Witt, again, this is a companion to the previous motion.
This is Aaron Witt with Wastewater. Project bids were opened on December 21, 2021. The project was advertised in the local paper, posted on Eye on Wave, as well as Drexel Plan Room. Five firms responded to the bid. Infrastructure Solutions provided the lowest responsive bid of $7,40,800. Burns &amp; McDonald, the design engineer, reviewed the bid and recommends them for award. Staff, JCW staff agrees with this recommendation and with that, I'll stand for questions.
Questions. Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Similar observation about the probable cost estimate, but my question is Infrastructure Solutions, do we have experience with this firm?
Yes, we do. Most recently, they did the work with Dyke's Branch Pump Station along Mission Road.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, a motion would be in order. Ms. Hanslick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the Board of County Commissioners authorize a contract with Infrastructure Solutions LLC to construct the Metcalf and 103rd Interceptor Relocation and Capacity Improvements Project ICM-1-contract 22 in an amount not to exceed $7,40,800 per invitation for bid number 2020-038.
Allenbrand, second.
Hanslick made the motion, Allenbrand seconded the motion to authorize the contract with Infrastructure Solutions LLC for the 103rd and Metcalf sewer project as recommended. Any further questions or comments? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. I have six votes in favor, motion carried. Next item.
Item number 14, resolution number 001-22. Consider adopting resolution number 001-22 dissolving the Sunflower Community Redevelopment Authority and approving an amendment to the pre-development agreement between Johnson County and Sunflower Redevelopment LLC for the Sunflower Army Ammunition Plant property.
Ms. Trent, Chief Counsel.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Peg Trent, Chief Counsel. As the clerk has read to you, you have two documents put before you today for your consideration, one being the amendment to a redevelopment agreement that was entered into between the county and SRL back in 2005, along with a resolution for a dissolution of a redevelopment authority that had been created at that time back in 2005. Specifically, and I've addressed in the past with you at the agenda review, the county back in 2005 had took on the feet of when the Army decided to declare the Sunflower Army ammunition property to be, what do you call, surplus. At that time, there was a decision to involve the county in order to locate a developer for that site. At that point, there were RFPs that were put out, there were several individuals that did or companies that did bid. There was a company that it did not go forward, but then SRL ultimately in '05, you entered an agreement. However, at that time, just so you're aware, there was federal legislation authorizing that transfer to SRL and it did not include the county being part of that ownership or title transfer. It was part of the statute for circula, for public benefit, but it, we, the county was not involved in that transaction. However, because the county was involved in going out in that process in order to find developers for that development of site and cleanup, there was a redevelopment agreement that was entered and it covered 9,000 acres of that site in which it was essentially, initially about the closing, what would happen in that interim until SRL took ownership of that property. But it also addressed other issues to ensure that the consent order that was entered into by KDHE with SRL and the Army would do certain standards for cleanup. It was not the intent of that agreement at that time for the county to be the enforcer of that consent order or to be the individual or the county to make sure that they're complying. The compliance of them and their cleanup rests solely with the Army and KDHE. Even the counties, and we have Mary Beverley present, even the county's environmental department was basically involved to make sure we're getting reports at best and that didn't occur along the way because the county wasn't involved in the cleanup and ensuring it. But there are, their involvement was limited, is what I'm saying. So I want to make sure that the county understands that the county had no ownership or liability for that cleanup, but you stepped into that role to facilitate the meeting and that transfer property that occurred between SRL and the Army. I'm happy to say that the Army and SRL, to a degree, have been cleaning up that location of 9,000 acres. And other than the county and their agreement, there had been no activity with the county related to SRL and this project, other than the authority and a comprehensive plan that was completed for the 9,000 acres that was adopted. And at that time, an authority was created, a redevelopment authority with a board and there were appointments, they met, I believe, once and that's all they've met. And I think the last meeting, and the chairman may recall because he was involved in the appointments and all of it, I think was in 2008. So it's been quite a time since there's been active involvement by the county. Fast forward to last year, 2021, in November, the county became aware of some activity on that Sunflower, not just the cleanup, but activity of interest in moving forward with development. And at that time, City of DeSoto annexed into their community 6,000 of the 9,000 acres at that time. And that also included the parks and rec, what was intended to go to them eventually. And just to clarify for the record, the, at the time of when the transfer had occurred to SRL, thereabout, 131 acres in that 6,000... thereabout, one hundred and thirty-one acres in that six thousand that was annexed actually was transferred to the County Parks and Rec Board. It is anticipated that they are, from the six thousand, to receive an additional eighteen hundred or up to two thousand acres. So they already received one hundred and thirty-one, the difference they are entitled to. There were, just for clarification, boundaries were not as specific, just saying, you know, here or about in this location. In addition, there were public benefits of that six thousand that went into City of DeSoto in November. That included K-State, KU, just so you're aware, they're out there. And those have not been transferred yet. There's transfer agreements, but those are still waiting for the cleanup. And the cleanup, too, I know at least the County Parks and Rec, will remain and is at residential standards. The agreement that precipitated when it annexed, that no longer is this in the county. And as I indicated, we had back in oh-five, a comprehensive plan, which Jay, the Director of Planning, can address to the now effects of taking six thousand acres out of the unincorporated area into now the City of DeSoto. That land, at this point, would be under City of DeSoto's standards and development and how that would proceed. So with that said, here we have a redevelopment agreement that the county had entered into with SRL back in oh-five. So if you understand, there are two development agreements, basically, on that six thousand acres that were annexed into the City of DeSoto. You had the SRL agreement between the county for the development. And then now you have, because of the City of annex, City of DeSoto coming forward with a TIF district, they have also a development agreement for that same land. So at this point, the amendment is to acknowledge that six thousand of the nine thousand acres were annexed into the City of DeSoto. The agreement also just makes clear of what the role is now as we move forward with the remaining three thousand acres and to ensure that some of these side agreements that we have out there, which there are quite a few, as I discussed, the public benefit agreements with Parks and Rec, KU, and Kansas State, is to ensure that they're acknowledged, that those are moving forward out of there, but also to make sure as with the development of that land and wherever the developer may go with that, with projects, that we're ensuring that certain protections are made. And some of those involve infrastructure for roads. That was made sure in the amendment to clarify that roads would still be protection because you still have three thousand acres that need access. So that was included in the agreement. In addition, of whatever occurs out there in quite a bit parcel of land, they wanted to make sure that there was fire protection. So a donation is occurring through this agreement and the amendment of five acres. Now, it did not discuss who would be responsible for the payment of that particular station, but that that was to be reserved for fire protection. In addition, there was an intent to make sure that our partner, the County Parks and Rec, is protected as well. They have a separate agreement, but we wanted to make sure that we're doing better now in observing and watching what's going on as we move forward because of your remaining three thousand acres. The, through SRL and through KDHE, there is a commitment now, and we can hear more from Mary Beverley, to provide summaries of cleanup. And again, that was occurring with the Army up until COVID hit, but just to make sure we're actually getting the information to the planning department and everyone that needs to occur. So the agreement kind of taken a step back to make sure we pulled it all together to protect the county. The resolution dissolves the authority, as Jay will get into. It's no longer necessary for the remaining three thousand acres, but he will address the planning piece that's remaining on the three thousand, as well as that authority. And Mary Beverley will be able to address with you as to the cleanup standards, what's transpired, and how this agreement still protects the county and its citizens in the unincorporated area.
Mr. Leipzig.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the Board, Jay Leipzig, Planning Director. I don't have a lot to add. Peg's comments are very good in terms of providing a history of this property. She mentioned the unincorporated area, additional three thousand acres, was in the, the original concept plan that was approved in ninety-eight was for single-family residential. We have reached out to the City of DeSoto and will be coordinating those efforts with, with those property owners to do some comprehensive planning efforts to provide an updated land use plan to you very shortly in the, in the near future. That's one of our first priorities. So that being said, we were looking at that. It, there are a number of properties out there. It's very rural, obviously an agricultural. But we're going to be engaging in land use development plan in that area for those three thousand acres. With that, I can turn it over to Mary Beverley, if you'd like to, additional information.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mary Beverley, Environmental Health Division Director with Johnson County Health and Environment. Our purpose, you know, at DHE is to continue to work with KDHE. We've also reached out to the Army Corps of Engineers to try and understand what they're doing on the site, specifically what's left for the three thousand acres for the county. And we've asked for a summary report. We've asked for maps, trying to understand what's out there. We, we have an idea that, that based on some of the documents that we see, that we understand that we've, this three thousand acres, that there's a lot still to do with munitions and things of that nature. But again, we're trying to get the information from KDHE to make sure it's accurate and also the developer. So, so that's our role, to make sure that we're ensuring that the site's cleaned up appropriately and to protect public health.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Trent, I have a question. There really are two actions that are required. One is a resolution regarding the, I'll call it the planning group that was put together, when it was anticipated that development would occur under authority or auspices of the county. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And so for most of the acreage of six thousand, that no longer applies because it is now in the City of, of DeSoto.
That is correct.
Then the second separate action that needs to take place is a decision in regards to the amendment to the pre-development agreement that was drawn back in early two thousand. Is that correct?
That is correct as well.
Okay. So, questions at this point in time? Ms. O'Hara.
Yes. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have many questions. I know that Peg is not shocked at that. I have been delving into this for the last two months, and this is the binder that I have accumulated over the time. And that doesn't even include the, the Tenth District Court's decision on the Shawnee Nation's lawsuit claiming that, that this was excess federal property that was to go back to the Indian Nation that there is, that there was a reservation. Very, very interesting reading. But my question is, DeSoto's, is DeSoto's annexation, is it ironclad? Or are we under the proposition that if the City of DeSoto does not adhere to their pre-development plan of hundred percent tax increment finance district, that, that SRL has the right to de-annex? Is that correct?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, just to put it a little bit differently in your question, the annexation agreement, the development agreement, does outline certain requirements or things that if development did not go forward, or the TIF didn't go forward, that in fact, that the land that they've annexed, six thousand acres, could be de-annexed back into the unincorporated area.
So my question is, is how do we deal with that possibility that this will come back to the county? Because we do not know what future city councils are going to decide, and this is going to be carved up into, I'm assuming, several sub-districts. And so that this is an element that we need to discuss now instead of being surprised in the future, oh, suddenly we have two thousand more acres in the county than we had anticipated. And what do we do with that? And how do we go forward?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, great question.
Yeah.
Let me answer that. At this point, the agreement, the amendment, addresses this. The amendment addresses that in the event of a de-annexation, we go back to where we were originally, which is back to residential standards and development, and then we'll be back with Jay to update our comprehensive plan. So the amendment did envision that, and we did include that to address it.
Thank you. And then my other question is, is that there, there were filings done on the parklands and K-State and KU properties. They just weren't filed. Is that correct? Can you just explain that a little bit?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, just to have clarification, there is a transfer agreement that was executed among the parties. There has not been a recorded deed at this point because they're still waiting on the cleanup, and there's a process to release the covenants that are currently on the property and dividing of that property to release it to those entities.
Okay, but they were, they were described within meets and bounds, within these agreements, I believe.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, in the amendment agreement that we have before you, we do address those agreements. But it did not get into the details. It gave a broad area, but not to the detail of a recorded deed what would be going. And that will require, and I believe we did put that in the agreement to protect Parks and Rec, that there would be this negotiation because there could be movement of land to move it to a different area that may be better for the developer and what's going around and as well as connectivity to the trail system. So there, we did add that in the agreement.
Okay, and then one, 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 well, my last question for right now. In our original pre-development agreement, did we agree to defend against any other claims on this nine, nine thousand and thirty-five acres?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, in the original agreement, there is no, it put in there, there's no agency relationship. There's no relationship between the parties because the county is not involved in that transaction, if you will, and all of the agreements between the Army and SRL and KDHE consent order and all of those agreements. So as a result of that, the agreement does contain a clause, the original agreement. And so with every amendment, just so you're aware, when an agreement is amended, we outline what new terms are moving forward, but we still say the original terms in the original agreement, which we didn't discuss amendment, still apply. That would still apply to this amendment and this transaction that there is no agency relationship between whatever may happen, you know, as to cleanup. It's just basically, we're having an agreement with them to ensure protections as we move forward.
But under Section C, Subsection one, was Johnson County committed to satisfactory resolution of pending lawsuits affecting Sunflower and its transfer?
Mr. Chairman, I can answer that, and Commissioners. There was at the time that this transaction occurred, and I think Commissioner O'Hara alluded to it initially during her initial questioning, is the Shawnee tribe had litigation pending. And so at the time when they entered this agreement, Army with SRL and as part of this transaction with the county, it acknowledged that that was still pending. Subsequent to that, two thousand and five, there was a Tenth Circuit case that went up to appeal where the court found that the Shawnee tribe did not have, that reservation portion did not have ownership because that would hinder the transfer of title and what would transpire. So that was envisioned. There's also been other litigation that has occurred with SRL, as you can imagine, as to the cleanup along the way, which has led to some delays in cleanup by SRL. And those have been resolved as well. So that's what it was, was envisioning all those claims and litigation that was coming forward.
And under Article two, Agreement to Purchase with the Army, that it did state that the Army agrees to use its best efforts to encourage and cooperate with the United States Department of Justice to oppose and defeat any claims by the Shawnee Indians for Sunflower?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm not sure what you're reading from, but I'm aware of the Tenth Circuit case that ruled in favor that the Shawnee tribe unfortunately had no rights. And I, and you know, as hard as that is, as we have learned moving forward from a policy, legally speaking, that was the finding of the court, and it was not appealed to, or if it did, it didn't go up for review in front of the U.S. Supreme Court.
Correct, but this is the contract that was signed, and it was in, in connection with our pre-development agreement. I mean, it's all interrelated. And the, I'm sure that you've read the Tenth District.
Absolutely.
And, and George, I'm sorry, Judge Ebel held that the enactment of the two thousand and five National Defense Authority Act provision giving Secretary of the Army discretion to convey former military installation and historic boundaries of the Shawnee Indian Reservation to, to entities selected by county board for economic development mooted the tribe's claims to the property under the Property Act.
It's unfortunate, but that's, you know, finding that meant that they did not have any right in the law.
And that, that the Army and the county, they were, they were required under contract to pursue any, any methods to, I'll reframe that.
Yeah, and I understand the frustration because it's hard, you know, philosophically, whatever you may feel about that. But the court pretty much, we did, under our underlying contract with SRL, it was available. The court made a decision. There's nothing more.
I, I, I understand that, but the county and the Army materially participated in defending this. And that, that, you know, we have Shawnee Mission Parkway, we have Shawnee Mission School District, we have the Shawnee Mission, we have Shawnee, we have Shawnee County. I mean, the Shawnees had control of one point six million acres with eighteen twenty-five and eighteen thirty-nine treaties. And it's like, we just, you know, we, we celebrate that history, but the, the fact of the matter is, is that we actually were required contractually to participate, to intervene materially in, in this decision. And it's, it's a, this isn't past, this isn't far past. This is two thousand and five. And this court decision was handed down in September of two thousand and five. I just want the, the commission to be aware of, of this, the messiness of it, and that the, the SRL was required to perform pursuant of the consent order agreed by KDHE to clean this up. And now we are asked to reconsider our pre-development agreement. We have two pre-development agreements that are in, that are in action right now. And it's like SRL forgot to get the divorce from the county before they married DeSoto. And then we also have the issue that if future city councils do not adhere to the one hundred percent TIF district, which envisions two hundred million dollars to be diverted from public coffers over the next twenty years, that we, we could end up with this property back in our jurisdiction. This is, this is complicated. And I, I really was hoping that we would have a committee of a whole discussion on this because of the complexity and the nuances within this agreement and what's being asked of us. So anyway, those are, those are my comments. And I really want to say that I truly appreciate Peg Trent's work on being forthright with all the documentation. As this has been a lot in the last two months. This has been, I didn't know anything about this until the first week of December, and then I started asking questions. And like I said, she has given me all of this information over the past two months. And, and it's a lot to devour. It's a lot to go over. And she has been snowed with many, many, many issues. And the timing of this probably was not opportune. But I would really, I would really suggest that we delay doing to, on action. But I would really, I would really suggest that we delay doing to, on action on this and actually have a committee as a whole so that we can delve into this more. What's going to happen if future city councils decide that they're not going forward with this? How are we actually going to be looking at this? What are the requirements of KDHE? They were required, SRL in the beginning was required to clean up almost all of it to residential. Now they're going to have great swathes of it that they will only be cleaning up to industrial levels. And then there's the fact that Parsons, Kansas has an ammo plant, and their cleanup is 98% complete with no public money, with no, no public money, no property tax money going into the cleanup. And this is just a huge deal. So anyway, those are my comments.
Well, thank you very much. I think reading the amendment to the pre-development agreement is very clear that if property is de-annexed, then it goes back to the prior agreement. The court case that you noted has been solved and has been, decisions have been made by the court. So I don't think it's as complicated as that. The 6,000 acres is now part of DeSoto, and as such, their city planning and zoning folks have decisions in that regard. And as I mentioned a week ago, you know, the, the planning commission that was established, I'll use that term, by the county, basically dissolved because there was nothing to do. And on the 3,000 acres, that continued approximately, that needs to be continued to clean up, the Army's doing that. And if necessary, we can reconstitute the, the community planning group for that. It is still in the unincorporated part of the county, but it is not cleaned up. And so we have, through this amendment, protected the public beneficiaries, the park land, and the opportunity for land for the fire station. So Ms. Trent, I think you've done an excellent job in, in covering all the bases that need to be covered in this regard. Other questions? Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Ms. Trent, I want to thank you and your staff because it has been an ongoing task, not just with this, with many other issues, and I really appreciate all your transparency in putting this together. I just have a couple of things I want to say. First of all, when I was sworn in, the staff offered different training. And so this isn't new, this whole, the Sunflower, this has been going on for over 20-some years. And there was almost a three-hour training that Commissioner Myers and I sat through, and it was most informative, very detailed. And I can't go back, and you can't go back at what happened, and things are messy, and I can't go and overturn court hearing notices, but I appreciate when you came on board that you're working at, and I hate to use the word cleanup, but that's what you're doing. I also appreciate the partnerships. Also, the city manager from DeSoto is on the line if you want to talk with him. There's a partnership with our roads, with Brian Peg and his staff. There's a partnership with our planning department. There's partnerships with the city. There's a partnership in seeing something done here and getting it done, and that's the whole point of this, is to creating something for the citizens of DeSoto and to see something done. So I just want to compliment you on that. I appreciate your transparency and being open and providing all the information to all of us.
Other question. Ms. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of comments. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you outlining that today we're being asked to take two actions, but I wanted to ask the counselor, it appears that the actions that we're being asked today to take are basically procedural in nature, kind of to, their reflection to follow up on the, the decision made last week by the board and what the city of DeSoto has already made, and put our previous agreements and understanding of the environment in line with the, the new reality of the TIF and the expanded city district. Am I misunderstanding that?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, as you have astutely noted, there was a, underlying all of this is a TIF district. One of the items under the state statute is for you to determine, how are you adversely affected by that TIF district? And you still have 3,000 acres that remain. This agreement provides those protections that you are not adversely affected, and supplements it. So there's, you already, it's questionable because the courts have not defined what does adversely affected. We always think financially. Well, financially, this is ag land. Any development, you aren't adversely affected because you're going to have development which brings tax dollars and others, even regardless of the TIF, you have jobs creation and other items. So that's always a challenge. But in this area, you have environmental protection, and that protection is still in place no matter what with the consent order. That is from KDHE for the cleanup, and the Army as they continue, and SRL with the cleanup. So this agreement just gives you added benefits that you would not, or you would have already had, but making sure that those are outlined for you. But the TIF district, you voted at the previous meeting to support and not veto, using that it was adversely affected. So moving forward, this is another piece to complement the action that you previously took at the previous meeting.
So, so this is a process?
Correct.
Getting back to the original question.
Well-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, you did not go to law school, so you're not paid by the words, so I appreciate that. And your response was fine, and you do raise an underlying issue related to the TIF and the adverse effect, and as you've pointed out, it's not well-defined in statute, if at all, and trying to understand that, that's what I've struggled with, especially the 3,000 acres. Because the 6,000, I don't think anybody who has been there in the summertime and has watched the ground miraculously explode on itself would say that this is not a piece of property that is a brown field, as they put it. But the 3,000 acres that is, from my vantage point, somewhat in limbo because it's not directly impacted by the annexation or the TIF, is what I struggle with. Because by separating this out, does it undermine the potential future value and utility of that 3,000 acre that resides with us? And I had the opportunity, Mr. Chairman, to visit with Mary Beverley and her staff yesterday in trying to get an understanding of, well, where is KDHE? And is the 3,000 acres, is it better than, worse than, or about the same as everything else that's in play here? And we didn't have an answer, and that, that challenges me. And, Mr. Chairman, if we had not had the vote last week, I would have made a motion to remand this action, but I know that it would have been, right now, it would be well within your prerogative to rule that out of order, so I won't, I won't try that procedure. But I did, did want to thank Mr. O'Hare because I think her point of having a fuller discussion as this was emerging would have made me feel better because while I commend the city of DeSoto, and I commend this going forward for the 6,000, I still don't know what the long-term implications are going to be for the county and the county government, so I have those reservations.
Well, it's my understanding that as pertains to the remainder, the 3,000-plus acres, nothing changes. Nothing changes from what occurred back in 2004, 2005, that this amendment does not impact at all those original agreements or the activities and the authority of KDHE on that track. So, again, am I correct?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Fast?
Yeah, the 3,000 acres, 600 of that is KS, I mean, K-State and KU. The K-State land is more wooded. Will that remain in the unincorporated? And then the KU land is more by, you know, K-10. Will then eventually, you know, DeSoto annex the KU? Because, I mean, what I've always heard is the K-State, you know, they're going to do growing trees, it's going to be more rural research land. So I guess I would like to ask Jay, where does that 600, so we're, you know, it's not 3,000 that goes to parks, there's still the KSU and the KU. Will one remain unincorporated and one will become annexed? Or can-
Mr. Fast, Jay Leipzig, Planning Department. Minders?
No convincing during the presentation.
I apologize, I was hearing part of that conversation about the, the K-State property. Mr. Peterson, would you like to answer that question?
Well, it's fairly specific, were those properties included in the annexation or not? I don't believe they were, because 131 acres of the parks was not included in the annexation.
Not, but KU was.
I'm sorry?
KU.
Am I correct or am I wrong?
You're wrong.
Chairman, members of commission, John Peterson with Sunflower Redevelopment LLC, 11817, 87 Norwood Drive, Leewood, Kansas. I want to make sure I answer the specific question. I am a lawyer, so I'm-
Yeah.
If you'd restate the question, Mr.-
Well, the question is, the K-State, the KU property-
Chairman, my question was, there's 600 acres, you know, that will be K-State, KU. Will K-State remain in unincorporated and KU will be annexed? Has part of that been annexed already? So can you explain about the K-State and the KU property?
Two, two separate entities, obviously, KU and K-State. K-State land primarily used for agricultural research, those kinds of activities. A big portion of the K-State land was part of the early transfer. So they own their land today. Only approximately 100, I'm going to say 130, 140 acres actually will be transferred pursuant to the public benefit transfer agreements in the future. So they own their land. So they were not annexed in as part of the first, the part they own is part of the first annexation. KU is farther north. It's, and it's, was always identified, in fact, we have a separate agreement with the University of Kansas for a joint development when that property is ready to move forward for commercial uses. It's up in the north area, and it's actually in the area, that was in the area where production actually occurred as part of the operation of Sunflower Army ammunition plant. So it's part that is in active cleanup at this time. It is in the 6,000 acres.
I'm sorry, it is in the annexation?
KU is in the 6,000 acres, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So the KSU is not a part of our 3,000 now? They've, it's already completed, the K-State?
The K-State ground they own is in the 3,000 acres.
Okay. I have one more question for you.
Yes, go right ahead.
So the, the Sunflower ammunition property had, you know, this wide, you know, train system that went to Texas, connected with Burlington Northern. Is that rail system still there, you know, that could connect into the Intermodal, or is that all gone, that rail system?
It's actually a short line, or it's a spur off of the, the main line, that actually is the same main line that's going down to the Intermodal. The roadbed, the rail bed is still in place, very expensive part of putting in any kind of rail, even short line. In fact, it's our rail bed that serves Hudamaki and the other industrial users in the DeSoto. So we own it from the main line all the way through the city onto Sunflower. Part of planning, the working with DeSoto and with the market, is that we would reactivate the rail bed potentially on the Sunflower property. The rail's not there, but the rail bed is. So yes, it's very much part of the planning that's going on to provide that added benefit to not only have ground transportation opportunities, but also rail service.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Ms. O'Hara?
That goes north through DeSoto, correct? The spur?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it goes north to DeSoto, doesn't have anything to connect as, as far as connecting with Edgerton?
Well, not, the main line does.
Right, the main line does, but, but not the spur.
No, just the spur connects to the main line. Obviously, they bring cars off-
Right.
To service those existing facilities as you would do with facilities on Sunflower.
Okay, thank you. I have one more question for Peg. So this agreement, it does, under our agreement, almost all of the property was required to be cleaned up to residential standards. Is that correct? And there was a few, there was, in the future plan, and maybe, maybe it would be a question better asked to, to Jay, but there was just a few areas of high-tech, industrial use. Most of it was residential, and that was all to be cleaned up to residential standards. Is that, is that-
Well, here, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the problem this presents is when the land 6,000's been annexed into the city of DeSoto now, our comprehensive plan for planning of that area changes.
Correct. I'm not, I'm not arguing that.
So we can't clean up to this, the standards will change because the consent order is with KDHE. And depending upon what is developed on that 6,000, that will dictate the standards of cleanup. And so right now, our agreement was rendered moot, if you will, when you, when you, it annexed into the city of DeSoto, so we have no recourse.
Right, I understand that, but it's just the factual part is that a, a larger area is going to be cleaned up to industrial standards rather than, than residential standards, most likely.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, right now, we do not have a development plan to know how that's to be developed. They did put forth, you know, suggested, but there was residential factored into it. All the public land, like for Parks and Rec, the 2,000 of the 6,000 has to be to residential standards no matter what.
Right. And I, and I appreciate, I appreciate your efforts on that. And I understand that our jurisdiction is no longer in place, but I also understand, as reflected in the agreement, that if, if SRL decides to de-annex from DeSoto in the future, that, that then they will be back under our requirements.
Yeah, that is correct. It will revert back to our standards, which is residential.
Residential. So, thank you.
Well, KDHE is the, has overall authority in regards to that requirement, is my understanding. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you. Other comments?
Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Fast?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to meet with Beverley on the residential standards of our parkland. My understanding from the Corps of, not the Corps, the Army through the years, is that our parkland is probably in better condition. It's on the outskirts, a lot of trees, wilderness. Would you say, I mean, they've always said that through the years, that we're the designated Johnson County parks. I mean, it's right next to Kill Creek, it's not, it's really the least impacted of the, the land. Am I correct in saying that?
That is my understanding as well. We have reached out to the Army Corps of Engineers and KDHE to get a little bit of clarification on that and what's actually on the site. You know, I can't really speak to the parks area, but we are trying to get an understanding of what needs to be cleaned up on the 3,000 acres, and that will give us a better idea, you know, really overall. So we are working on that, we have yet to receive that report, but we are steadily working on that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, Commissioner Ashcraft was, you know, talking about, you know, a lot of concerns about our land, but I just want to make the point that of the land on the Sunflower, our land, I mean, it's, it's very trees, creek, wooden, it's really the least impacted of, of the entire plant area.
Well, I should mention this. Prior to the pandemic, I think for maybe three, maybe four years, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers had stakeholder meetings annually describing activity that was occurring across the 9,000 acres. One of those meetings included the Assistant Secretary of the U.S. Army, and so all of that information is- that information is available for anyone who wishes to access that. Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a clarification of Commissioner Fast's comment. I was referring to the 3,000 acres as land that will be the responsibility long-term for Johnson County to dispose of, not specifically the Parks and Rec lands, which, I mean, it could include some there, but that, as my understanding, is not the intent. And I understand that it is an issue to be developed, but the core issue for me is I would hate for some future commission to have to deal with these 3,000 acres along the lines of how we've had to deal with the Coleman property, you know, kind of the Coleman property on steroids, and we've struggled with that. And I just, I just don't know, I hope the 3,000 acres don't turn into that, but Mr. Chairman, in 50 years, we can come back and find out.
Right. That depends upon how active the Army is.
Yes.
In carrying out their responsibilities, and maybe there's another city who wants to annex it, or maybe DeSoto wants to continue to annex it, but, you know, on that property, nothing changes from the agreements that were drawn back in the early 2000s. So it's no better, it's no worse than what was originally agreed to, so. I think we had one person who wanted to comment on the planning, as I recall.
Yes.
Sir, we have, we have one virtual and one in person. Let me pull up.
Okay, let's, let's hear those comments at this time. Who is virtual?
Can you hear me?
We have Stephanie Berlin. Stephanie Berlin, you may speak now.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, Stephanie Berlin, Olafah, Kansas. Several studies have been done on the carcinogenic substances used in explosives in soils and groundwater that make Sunflower toxic. Recently, there has been a political push to put solar farms on these sites to promote energy, green energy. While nice in theory, solar energy requires more than normal maintenance, and also means people being on-site and doing extensive oil work. I hope, I'm sorry, soil work. I hope the commission has read the recent studies about these workers who have fallen ill, who have looked at dispersion models of carcinogens that the Sunflower ammunition plant has once messed with within the soils, and this is after cleanup. The brave souls who cleared the Twin Towers, which was not on a previous toxic site, and later developed cancers and other diseases due to cleanup and working there, they're struggling now with healthcare costs. I want the answer today, are you setting up the taxpayers of Johnson County to be liable for potential healthcare costs and lawsuits? Secondly, I'm baffled as why now? I would like or demand that all people voting on this disclose any financial interests, individual or family members, and all the LLCs involved in this before and after the agreement, and any interests in companies that may be solicited for services by this arrangement. Just because this effort is joint, and it has been in process for decades, these are not reasons to approve. In fact, it should make you take pause. I'm speaking as a resident today, but I'm also a licensed CPA, and I can tell you guys you are sorely misguided on financial audits internally versus externally. You have a performance audit department which requires no accounting education. Thank you.
Thank you. And there was someone else in person?
Now we have Michael Round. Michael Round.
Good morning, my name is Mike Round, I live in Overland Park. At last week's board meeting, the 200 million TIF district in DeSoto was discussed regarding the ammunition plant. SRL had obtained this property 2005 with the promise of development, developing it to residential standards. They received 100 million plus from the Army to do this. After burning through this fund, there was still significant work to be done, the project has sat dormant for some time, that's my understanding. What to do? So here is my understanding, my guess as to what happened. 2020, 2000, early 2021, SRL, DeSoto get-together, SRL says, we'll do a blight analysis, determine it's a blight area, you annex it. Once you've annexed our land, you can ask for $200 million from the county, because it's not their land now, and now it's our land, and we'll use 160 million of that money to clean up our land. That's my guess. It probably will cost more, so we won't even rezone it, or we won't even clean it to residential standards, we'll clean it to industrial standards. We'll develop a huge warehouse district with the land. So a few questions. If you need 160 million for cleanup, how can the land provide some type of tax base to pay for that development initially? Since the cleanup must precede development, the 160 million for cleanup can't be spread over 20 years if it takes place right away. How does that financing work? If a warehouse district is built, what does this mean from a traffic truck perspective? These were all questions that should have been addressed by the entity you want to dissolve today, the Sunflower Community Redevelopment Authority. That's why they were created in the first place. In truth, they never existed. But there is a provision in the state statute that says if you dissolve it, you get it. It's my understanding, it doesn't go back to Sunflower, it goes back to you. That's my understanding of it.
Okay.
Can I finish, just?
All right, thank you very much. I'm sorry, your time is up.
Last thought. I want to be good, I want to be sure, you want to be sure. Slow down the process and let's be sure we get it right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Chairman Ilert.
Any other comments?
That is, that completes our public comment.
Okay. It is back before the commission, and I would suggest that we take these motions one at a time. The first would be to dissolve the community planning group, and then the second motion would be to approve the amendment to the development agreement. You know, I would say this, my, none of us were present when the original work was done, and in conversation with legal department representatives who were present back in the early 2000s, there was a significant underestimate of the cost of the cleanup of this property. And for a period of time, there was discussion back and forth, action back and forth, and so many, many times, more dollars have been required and will be required to clean up the property to the standard that KDHE require. So I think both of these steps are necessary to move forward and to help bring a blighted property into a productive resource for the county. Ms. Allenbrand.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion, but I was given one suggested motion. Is there two, or is it all incorporated in one?
Break it up into two, on the motion there, break it to two.
Yeah, I suggest we break it up into two.
Break that into two, right there.
Right.
The first part and then the second part.
Okay, let's see if I get this right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to adopt Resolution Number 001-22, dissolving the Sunflower Community Redevelopment Authority.
Commissioner Fast, second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the resolution dissolving the Community Redevelopment Authority. Commissioner O'Hara.
Thank you. I do have, I do have another question, I know everyone's shocked. Has SRL, I don't know who needs to answer this, has SRL requested, have you, have you requested waivers from KDHE as of yet? Has SRL requested waivers?
Yeah, absolutely.
On cleanup?
You mean to varying degrees of cleanup?
Yes, yes.
No, we did, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we, the staff, legal department, did meet with KDHE, and Mary Beverly was present, and at that point, we inquired of that, if there had been any waivers. And to our understanding right now, no.
Okay.
Because there's no plan before, you know, specific as to development in that area right now.
Okay, and also, I do want the public to understand that the Army has, has an obligation to clean this site up with federal money, this is a federal issue. Federal entities created this problem, and they have indicated that by 2028, that they will have completed their cleanup. So again, this is a huge issue. I do not believe that it has been vetted properly with the fact that we are changing the vision of this area, that we are not, we are not following through with our comprehensive plan, and this is, this is a real problem, is that the county creates comprehensive plans, and people really use that as a guideline as to whether they purchase property and what kind of homes they build, or whatever. And unfortunately, it is not, it's extremely fluid, but I just think that people need to understand that, and it is going to impact the people surrounding the Sunflower ammo plant. And I just, again, I just think that we, we should have deferred this to a committee of the whole and vetted this much, much more deeply, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, while these votes may be foregone conclusions, and I do see them basically as procedural, and, Mr. Chairman, I want to agree with you that as it relates to the 3,000 acres not included in the annexation and TIF, that they will be no better or no worse. I just have not seen the analysis on it and the extent of the issue on that property, and I also have objections to how it was brought forth and how it's been maneuvered for a vote, and so my vote will reflect those concerns.
And thank you. Commissioner Fast.
Yeah, I have a question for John. So this has been, I mean, you've been working on this 20 years, you might correct, as a governor, or congressman, or senator, I mean, it's been.
Microphone.
Years of work with many elected officials, two chairpersons.
Becky, Mike.
Oh, okay.
Two chairpersons, but when you, when Sunflower came forth, the county just didn't hand it to you, you had to put in a bid, am I correct? I mean, it was a competitive bid process that's, when, you know, Kessinger, Hunter, can you explain how that went?
Very briefly, John Peterson for the record with SRL. It was a process that had never been utilized before. It was statutorily created through the support of Senator Roberts, and it was from day one meant to be a, really, the term gets thrown around rather loosely now, but a public-private partnership, where the state, the county, and a private entity would move forward to take 9,000 acres that nobody at that point could figure out what to do with. It was being used for almost as severe environmentally impacting uses at that time by contract with the Army than it was when it was an ammunition plant, and to start the process. And in 20 years, we all learned a lot. And one thing I will say for SRL, we didn't abandon it. There were times where it, there was, you walk down a hall and the doors are locked, and you could say, you know what, let it go back to be Army surplus. But I'm not speaking on behalf of myself, I'm speaking on behalf of the individuals involved. You mentioned Kessinger, Hunter. They said, we made a commitment to the county and to the state to keep working and keep working and figure this out, and that's where we are here today, in that process, with a lot of help. County has been at the table with us over these years, talking to the Army, renegotiating with the Army. The Army's become a good partner, it's really starting to work, and all of this is just an evolution to make something happen and productive, and now with the ability to work with the city of DeSoto, which we've worked with over the years on various issues anyway, that's where we are today. So we appreciate your support. They are a process, they're procedural steps to keep these steps going forward.
So the main goal, Chairwoman Annabeth Serba, I give her a lot of credit, she negotiated the parkland with you, that there was a public benefit, but the goal for the county was liability risk. Is that, would you say that was the number one goal, that for Senator Roberts, for Annabeth Serba, for the county, for Governor Sebelius at the time, was risk and development, or what would you say?
I remember the risk to the county from a cleanup responsibility, from a legal liability in terms of contaminated property, it was an attractable issue of the county, that they would have no responsibility and no exposure, and that was the premise of the original agreement, and it remains the premise of the agreements today.
Thank you. Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Fast, I really appreciate you bringing that up, because this has been ongoing, and this has not been spearheaded, or something that's been underneath the table, so I really appreciate that. And I do know the city of DeSoto, along with the developer, plan on having, having and hosting open forums to let people know what's going on. And you know, there was a couple things that wasn't mentioned, the fire station's going to have MEDAC in there, the parkland is looking at connecting parts so that it connects throughout Johnson County, and I'd be remiss if not telling Mary Beverly, I want to thank you for your work in this and your continued effort to make sure that this is moving forward and that we're doing the right thing. And, Mr. Chair, at that point, I would like to call a vote.
Okay, well, the motion is before us. It's been a lot of conversation, thank you very much. The clerk will please call the motion in regards to the dissolving the.
Yeah, more questions. Can I, one more question?
Go right ahead.
Call the vote. So we're giving that land on the fire district, will that include MEDAC too? Because we're going to need a new MEDAC station there.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the land was going to be donated to the county, so the county will decide at that time, but it is the intent, it could be used for the fire station or MEDAC, or both.
They were going to be both.
Right. Okay, the motion is before us, so clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
No.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
With reservations, no.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. I have four votes in favor, two opposed, motion carried. Do I hear a motion to adopt the amendment to the development agreement? Ms. Allenbrand.
Okay. I move to approve the amendment of the pre-development agreement between Johnson County and Sunflower Redevelopment LLC for the Sunflower Army Ammunition Plant property.
Second, Hanslick.
Allenbrand made the motion, Hanslick seconded the motion to approve the amendment to the pre-development agreement. Any questions or comments? Ms. Fast?
Yes, I have another question for John. So preserving Johnson County history is really important to me. When I was in City Council of Roland Park, I worked for four years, that we'll have historical signs, and I'm the chairperson on Negro Creek, that we have history about Negro Creek, and this was the largest, world's largest ammunition plant. I mean, there's also the California and, I think, the Santa Fe Trail, and so the history is just incredible. I've, you know, when I worked for Congressman Moore, I got to meet with families, three generations of families worked there and talked about the hazardous conditions there, but they did it because they were fighting Vietnam, you know, Korean War, World War II. Is there any way to have some historical signs? And I'd be willing to even, you know, I know the Kansas Historical Society has very little money, advocate with them. It's just sad, I see so often, because of that mortgage tax revenue was taken off, our historical groups are having bake sales to have a historical sign, and just to honor, you know, it's the pioneers, the Shawnee Tribe, the men and women, there was like, you know, 20,000 people worked there, I think, through the time, and would that be a consideration that you would think you would be willing to have?
Absolutely, and this may sound obligatory, but those of us on behalf of SRL that have worked on this site, you really become immersed in the richness of the history of the area, not only from its earliest days, but through its piece of the puzzle of the economy and contribution to war efforts and. to war efforts and all those things that went on. And it is, we're working with DeSoto on actual development plans, working these four. Those topics are coming up and we, I know Mayor Walker spoke very eloquently at one of the hearings about the fact that this isn't a big shot to DeSoto. We're used to having this as a productive piece of property out there, a job center, a job creator. It's in the DNA and fabric of DeSoto. And so they, they cherish it and I, we will have those conversations where involvement, welcome the input. One quick, this isn't a commitment nor is it a plan, but there is a development concept brewing where the iconic towers would be kept potentially as a, kind of a signal to, to what it was about. I, that, but I would just tell you that those kinds of conversations are happening. So we'd welcome your input, Commissioner.
Thank you. Well, I think that's a good idea. And so I think probably, you know, we do have some artifacts and, in the museum which speak to this issue. And so I think there would be a large number of people and historical societies in the cities and the counties who would be willing to participate in the future.
Mr. Chairman, I want to correct something. Peg Trent, Chief Counsel, on something I misspoke. I want to make sure the five acre donation is going to the Northwest Consolidated Fire District. I apologize, I said county and I wanted to correct that for the record.
That is, that is correct. Ms. Hanslick.
Thank you. I, two, two comments. One is I appreciate Commissioner Fast bringing up the historical value. In fact, she and I, when we were first elected, had met with members, staff at the Johnson County Museum to find out what all was there in regard to the Sunflower Army Ammunition Plant. And also learned that the documents relating to that plant are, are all held by the Johnson County Library. So we do have a lot of historical information and, and I do, I'm excited to hear that those towers may be somehow kept in place. I, I think they're wonderful pieces of history and beautiful to look at. Secondly, just in regard to, to the breadth of conversation that we've had, I, I just wanted to say that this, this Sunflower Army Ammunition Plant has been on my radar way before I became a county commissioner. It's, it's an important part of our community and it's, I am, I remain very, very excited and even more so after hearing the information today that it has the opportunity for a new life and in the very near future. And I, I feel very confident that the county, especially led by our very able legal team, is, has done everything possible to assure that this is, this is being done in the best interests of the county and of our residents. So I'm, I look forward to what the future will hold for this piece of property.
Ms. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes. Peg, I've been advised that there's two waivers on the SRL property that is posted on the county website. I, I have no idea. Is that true?
On the county website?
Yes.
I don't know what waivers you're referring to, but I was, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I was present in a meeting with Mary Beverley and this question was specifically asked by me.
Okay.
To understand, has there been executed any waivers to change the residential cleanup? And it was also in the context of me trying to understand, our legal department to understand how that changes and what process is incurred. It's, it's a process through KDHE because their SRL, pardon me, Army is under, and SRL under the consent order, which has various degrees. So to have a waiver, it's more involved than just an amendment. So I specifically asked that and I was told no. And you were at the meeting.
Right. And I can just say, maybe what your constituent is saying is on our website, there's information for public comment on a couple of sites that are being cleaned up. So a solid waste management unit and an area of concern. And those have been up for public comment, I want to say, maybe through the 18th, but it, it should say at the top there. But that's not a waiver.
That's not a waiver.
If that helps clear it up.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Then I just also wanted to, just, just for educational purposes, that the 1.6 million acre reservation actually goes from Johnson County West, another four counties. Each county is approximately 307,000 acres. So the, the size of the Shawnee original reservation was immense. It was immense. And then through the agreements that, very questionable in my opinion, in 1854, reduced that to 200,000, which is still approximately two-thirds of Johnson County. So I just wanted just the, the board to have some historical perspective there.
All right, thank you. The motion is before us. I fully approve the motion. I think we should move forward in supporting the city of DeSoto. Ms. Allenbrand.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, can I make one comment? I just want to say, I really appreciate all the conversation going on and I would like, and also Commissioner Fast and Commissioner Hanslick. I did, being the liaison of the airport board, set an appointment and went out with, before the pandemic, and met with the Director of Johnson County Museum and, and a couple of people from there. And they plan on doing a reenactment at the airport. There's been a lot of information going around that there's ghosts out there, but they, they are going to create that enactment themselves. During that time, we found out that there are uniforms that are located in a garage out in Gardner. So I know that they want to be involved in this and I appreciate both of you and would be more than happy to help set on a committee to help, you know, with that, to move forward. So thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you very much. The motion is before us. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
No.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
With reservations, no.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. I have four votes in favor, two opposed. Motion carried.
Chairman Ilert, as the clerk, I would request.
I'm ahead of you, clerk.
Please break. Hallelujah.
But I do, but I do have a question. Should we take a 30 or 40 minute recess for lunch and then come back and finish? What is your, or five minutes?
That's good.
Chairman, this is Penny. There are some lunches by 12:30 that will be here. If that factors in your timing.
Okay, all right. We'll take a five minute recess and come back for the balance of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Action Agenda under Management Reports. Ms. Posthoke Ferguson.
Chairman and Commissioners, no report this week, so we'll move on to Legislative Update with Maury Thompson.
Mr. Thompson.
He should be on Zoom.
All right. Excuse me. Maury. A question? Ms. O'Hara?
Yeah, I have a question for County Manager. So, we do not, we do not have a COVID update?
Actually, we do have one after the Legislative Update.
I'm sorry?
We do have one after the Legislative Update.
It's listed on the agenda.
Oh, I didn't turn my page. I thought I saw it first and then I was thinking, I was going, well, where is it? Because it's usually under Management Reports.
Yeah, it's moved around on the agenda before.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes, good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Maury Thompson. You were provided your weekly Legislative Update by our consultants. The most significant piece of that report that I would point out today, I believe, is on Page Three, a number of housing bills that we are following that I commented on last week. One of those hearing was held this week, so those will continue to move. Also, a number of miscellaneous items that I would share with the Board this morning. Today is the last day for non-exempt committee-sponsored bill introductions, so I, for one, am hopeful that things will slow down. Lots and lots of bill introductions over the last few weeks, lots of activity to follow, will continue to do so. Secondly, Commissioner O'Hara has asked last couple of weeks about an update on Senate Bill 338 dealing with the Kansas City Area Transportation Authority. Reminder, that was a bill introduced by Senator Thompson and Senate Local Government on January 13th, and that bill has had no movement. Looking ahead to next week, the Legislature will move into the bulk of their budget hearings, so we will be following that very closely. Next, following a number of election bills, Senate Bills 351, 390, 391, and 394 have all been introduced this week and are beginning to have hearings, so we are monitoring those closely. See in my notes whether I've got anything else I wanted to comment on. I believe that is it. Be happy to stand for questions this morning.
Questions of Mr. Thompson. Ms. Fast.
Maury, do you know where, I mean, this week there was hearings on the low-income housing tax credit. Does it look like it will get out of committee?
I have reviewed the minutes from the hearings on one of those bills, Commissioner. I haven't had a chance to review the other two. It didn't look like there was much movement in the notes that I've saw, but I'd be happy to share those with you for your review.
Yeah, I think they had a hearing yesterday, so whatever you hear, let me know.
Will do.
Excuse me, Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Thompson, I had raised a question, I think it was last week, about some concerns of a House bill that might be raiding Senior Care Act funds. Since then, I have heard that that leadership and the committee have put the kibosh on it, the technical term, not, not supported it as it had originally been intended. Do you know anything additional?
No, I do not, sir. I'm hearing likewise, unless there are modifications to that bill, it's likely not to advance.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Ashcraft, for bringing that up, because that was a concern of the Commission on Aging. The chairman wanted me to, they were very concerned about that bill. They felt like it was well-intended, but it could be catastrophic to, to the seniors. So, that was House Bill 2543, so thank you for that.
Sorry, I didn't mean to preempt you.
I too would like to be updated. No, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. O'Hara?
Yes, I, Maury, what committee, what committee is SB 338 going to?
It's in Senate Local Government and has not moved yet.
Okay, so it's just sitting there.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, Mr., excuse me, Ms. Hanslick?
Yes, I just have one question for Mr. Thompson. What is the turnaround date? I was, I was not able to find it on the website.
Let me look real quick, see if I can, I believe I've got it on my calendar. I will find that date, the precise date, that to all of you here shortly.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Thompson.
You're welcome, sir.
Now, we will move to our COVID update. Dr. Ariola.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners, Dr. Ariola with the Department of Health and Environment. With me today is Ms. Elizabeth Hoesch, Director of Epidemiology. And the numbers are improving, next slide, as you will see in, in the two main metrics that we use to track the activity of the virus in the community. The incidence rate and positivity rate that you are seeing right now was pulled yesterday. The actual numbers right now, incidence rate is down to 533 per hundred thousand, and positivity rate is down to 17.8 percent. So, the numbers are dropping, dropping in the right direction, still pretty high. Again, like we said, prior to the Omicron surge, the highest that we had was still below where we currently are, but compared to where we were two, three weeks ago, these are, these are good things to see. Next slide. And next slide is again showing the positivity rate. The actual number today is 17.8. Next slide. So, next, a couple of slides, I'll present where we are with vaccination. This is again Web IZ data, residents that are vaccinated in Kansas. We are at about 67% fully vaccinated and about 77% partially vaccinated. Next slide. We typically break that down here by different age groups, and again, just, we continue to work to improve vaccination rates into, in the zero to 17-year-olds. For those that have been monitoring the COVID news, you know that we expect approval of vaccines for six-month to four-year-olds coming very soon, and that would be helpful in multiple ways. Next slide. And again, this is breaking down the Web IZ data, and I know the questions have come. We've been working on vaccination in the five to 11-year-olds, and so, right, right now, 42.4% in that age group have received at least the first dose, and about 32% are fully vaccinated. It's improving, albeit slowly. Next slide. And these are the CDC data. To reiterate, it, it does contain data that we don't see in the Web IZ data for our residents that are vaccinated in other states. As always, I point to the line, the row that's giving the numbers for those that are currently eligible, those that are five years or older, and that number, the percentage of vaccination there right now for fully vaccinated is at 78.3%. If you take that as, for the entire population, that number is at 73.5%. Again, still a pretty good for the county. Next slide. The next slide, this is really just providing information about the booster shots. As we've said, recent studies confirming improved, improved protection for those that have received their booster shots. Next slide. So, in terms of what it means, infections are decreasing, they're, they're still high. I should also mention that feedback from hospitals are improving, but still not back to where they, they need to be. Our vaccination rates are good, really highest in the region. Our vaccination rates is, are higher than the national average, and, but we have to look at the region more than the county, and the county, I mean, the region does have room to improve in terms of vaccinations, and so, we continue to encourage our residents to get vaccinated and to, and to wear masks. And that's what we have, summary of activity of the virus and vaccinations in the county, and happy to take any questions that you may have.
Questions of Dr. Ariola. Ms. O'Hara?
Yes, I find it interesting that the booster shot has not been taken up more vigorously, especially for the 65-plus. Is there, has there been surveys taken of people in that age group as to why we're at 57.3%, whereas with the two doses, we're at 90, I believe, we're 95%?
I mean, we, we can speculate, while I'll let Elizabeth also chime in. We obviously would like to have much, much better uptake of boosters, but I can tell you that people are still coming in for their booster shots, and we're not seeing a lot of new people coming for their first doses, but people are coming in, and actually, that continues to be the largest group that's coming to our clinics to receive their booster shots, so I expect that numbers to be, that number to be improving over time. Your question as to whether there was a survey, as to why, I'm not aware of one.
Okay.
Elizabeth, any, go ahead.
Yeah, Elizabeth Hoesch, Director of Epidemiology, would also say that the way that we have to link individuals in these different systems is very reliant on all of the information being identical, from their first dose to their second dose to that booster, which means the exact name used. So, if somebody uses a nickname at one of those appointments, it won't necessarily get linked, or if data entry is bad from whoever gave one of those doses. So, I would expect that number to actually be higher. As you know, we have issues with people being vaccinated in other, other states that we don't have that information about. So, for instance, if somebody got two doses in Missouri, their first two doses, and then got their booster in Kansas, that data wouldn't be linked in either of those systems or with CDC. So, there are some inherent issues with the data around people getting vaccinated.
But this is CDC data, so we would be catching those numbers if people...
CDC doesn't, I'm sorry, CDC doesn't receive names of individuals who are vaccinated, it's de-identified data from the states, and so, they don't really have a way to link that data either.
Well, but they, but they have percentages. That, that's fine. Then, my second question is, on the vaccinations in Johnson County for the first and second dose, on the first dose, it has population five years of age and greater at 95%, and that just doesn't seem like that that is, every, every, every one, it's the same. Population 12 years of age, 95%. Population 18 and greater, 95%. Percent of population 65 years of age and greater, 95%. And this is on, this is on just at least one dose, but then, when I look at other statistics, it doesn't seem like that the vaccination rate of the five years to 12 isn't, is high enough to be supporting that overall 95%. It just, there's 95, 95, 95, 95, and it just, I don't, I don't understand how that can possibly be. So, we, you can, you can discuss that with me later, that's fine.
No, but since you brought it up and people are listening, I think it's, I tried to address that when Commissioner Ashcraft asked the same question last week. CDC data and us now, we have decided to cap data at 95, for reasons that include what Elizabeth was saying. If somebody, for example, entered MyKEL to get the first two doses, and they come in for the booster shot and it's Mike, the system may not pick that up. So, it is possible that the booster shots, like she was explaining, the percentages that we are seeing is actually higher than what we are seeing, and on the other hand, it is possible that the percentages that we are seeing with the first doses aren't quite as high as they are.
Okay.
The second, the second reason why it's capped at 95 is we're using 2019 population estimate, where, so the denominator is probably lower than it should be. This is 2022, and population is probably much higher than the base that we're using.
Okay, so basically, it's unreliable. All right.
That's, that...
Well, I mean, it's...
That's interesting, but go ahead, yeah.
I mean, you know, it's just, it's not specifically correct. It's, it's maybe, I, I just, it, it just seems interesting, to say the least. But anyway, what about the schools? What are you seeing in the schools?
I think most people understand that with data, for, for us to finalize and clean up data and make it as accurate as we possibly can, it takes, it takes a while. That's why presenting this thing, the, one of the lines that you see is that these are provisional data. It doesn't make them unreliable. I think that, that's a big stretch to say. Your question about schools, we are seeing the same decline in schools. I got the update from school yesterday. The number of cases are also trending down, and that's very encouraging to us.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Ariola, Ms. Hoesch, thank you, of course, and I, I would tend to agree. I would not argue that the, the data is not reliable, but I, I would say when you're dealing with large numbers, data anomalies are prevalent and can't be helped, and I know you're constantly scrubbing that data, as I'm sure all institutions are, in trying to identify meaningful trends, and that's what I try to track in the statistics and in the analysis that you provide, and I think the, the trends are very encouraging. But you raised the point, or reflected the point that I raised a few weeks ago. It appears that mask use and vaccine, vaccinations have plateaued. I'm just wondering, are there any realistic expectations to improve those significantly? Possible, or especially beyond the, the five to 12 age group? Because one of the concerns that is noted, and I appreciate you stating it this way, Johnson County does fairly well, but is there really any expectation, realistic expectation that the rest of the region will catch up? And should we be driven by that? I mean, at some point, we, and I hear this from constituents all the time, as I know you do, you know, it's, it's time to move on and try to move away from pandemic thinking into endemic faking, and it's still the disease, and it's still real, but how we deal with it. So, any, any observations would be appreciated.
Thank you, Commissioner Ashcraft, and you made quite a few good points there. The concern that I personally heard with talking about steady state or endemic state was, we were talking about that when Omicron was surging and the numbers were quite high.
Correct.
I asked staff this morning to pull out just the number of persons that were infected from December when this started, and we had about close to 50,000 persons that were infected between the week, by the week of December 26 and, and yesterday. So, that's, that's a lot of persons, not counting home, home-based tests and, and all the other stuff. So, we also do have, as we talked about, people that are infected do have some measure of natural immunity. Now, some of those percentages are breakthrough infections, some are reinfections, so I understand that, but when you, when you put that along the decline, the steep decline, when you put that along with a fairly high rate of vaccination, we are hopeful that we will get to a place where we can, we, again, also because we have much better resources to manage this, we've got antiviral antibodies, we've got other ways of managing this illness than we did before. We will continue to offer vaccinations. I think the, looking forward to getting vaccines for under five is a huge development, but the expectations, cautious expectation in the public health community is we can get to a place where we are managing specific outbreaks and gradually getting into managing this outside of a big pandemic. Now, there's always the risk that you're going to have a variant that will escape the protections, there's always the risk that you have a variant that would create big-time outbreaks, but again, we have been careful from our experiences the past two years, but we are hopeful with the level of vaccinations, with the vaccine, vaccine available to those under five, that we will begin to have some level of break, and we can focus efforts more on specific outbreaks and rather than the community-wide interventions.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Ariola. That concludes our reports. We'll turn to Commission comments. Commissioner O'Hara?
Thank you very much. Obviously, the issue of masking our children in schools is still a huge issue, and I just want to share with the Board, from, from the, from the New York Times, "No Way to Grow Up," and we haven't seen this kind of achievement crisis in living memory because of, of the shutdowns and masking, especially for Black and Hispanic students with, in schools with high poverty rates. Major airline CEOs push back on plane mask mandates, case is very strong that masks don't add much. CNN, Dr. Lucy McBride, we don't have good, clear, real-world evidence that masking kids in school has a meaningful effect on transmission. And so, with that, I would like to make a motion. And I would prefer to have the date today, but I, I don't think that it will pass, so I am going to move the Board of County Commissioners, sitting as the Board of Public Health, to rescind Public Health Order 001-2021, effective February 17, 2022. I think that all of our schools, I think our parents, everybody needs a date certain that this, that this Public Health Order that, in my opinion, was very ill-conceived from the beginning, needs to, needs to end. We have school districts that have met and, and have stated that they are going to no longer require masks as of the 18th, and I, I just think that we need to just get over this and go forward and put the, put the authority back where it belongs, and that's for the school district, and that's with the school district. So, that is my motion.
Okay. Well, the Chair declares that that motion is out of order for the following reasons. That issue has been identified and on our agenda review for next week's action, and I think in the interest of complete transparency, that we need to follow the information that's been given to the public, and so, I declare that motion out of order. Ms. Hanslick?
Nothing today, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I would have seconded Commissioner O'Hara's motion, but I understand your ruling, and especially since it was scheduled for next week and with the, the time delay that Commissioner O'Hara has outlined, so I understand your thinking. But I wanted to change gears if I could, Mr. Chairman, and, and this is not to put you on the spot, but maybe a little bit. I, I realize I, I have a bit of a reputation of being a fiscal hawk, and that's fine, but I also have a passion when it comes to, to history, and since Commissioner Allen Brand and Commissioner Fast were talking about the historical significance of the sunflower plant, it reminded me, Mr. Chairman, that in the past few months, between all the COVID conversations, I've been needling you about having some kind of, for lack of a better term, ceremony in which we insert or place a time capsule reflecting the courthouse and what that represents to Johnson County, and I was just wondering, Mr. Chairman, if we're going to do that, if the Commission wants to do that, I, I think it would be an important recognition of a facility that will be a landmark for a few years, we trust, but also a recognition of our time. So, any thoughts, Mr. Chairman, that you...
I thought I've expressed earlier, but I'll express again. I think that's a great idea. There will be, and I forget the exact date, there was a time capsule that's going to be opened later this year by the Olahtha Historical Society. Do you recall what that date was?
No, I, I remember you stating that, but the...
But my suggestion would be that we open one and we bury one.
And, Mr. Chairman, I don't, I don't disagree, but there probably needs to be some, some forethought, forethought and planning. I mean, I've, I've buried a lot of things in my backyard, but never a time capsule. That we, we need to have some process, and I know, I think Gerald Hay and others have had some thoughts on that. I don't know if anybody at the Historical Society is and so forth, but we, we might want to spur them to action. I, I mean...
Good point, and Gerald, Gerald would be a good person. He's our historian of just about every aspect of Johnson County, so...
Correct.
We will put that in process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Allen Brand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I did have my hand raised up. There is a glare here, and so, I don't know if it's done on purpose, because I can barely see you, and I don't think you see me with my hands up, so...
I do, if you go high enough.
Okay, so, okay, so I do want to make a comment to Dr. Ariola and his team, and I want to thank them for everything they've done and everything that they've put in place. And to Commissioner O'Hara, I would feel more comfortable when we sit as the Board of Health, and so, I agree with you, Mr. Chair, so I just, I just want to make a So I just, I just want to make a comment. I think that we're all tired of the pandemic, we're all tired of being on Zoom calls, we're all tired of the masks, we're tired of all of it, but there is a procedure that we have to follow. So with that, I want to make my comments. I would like to say that kudos to the Airport Commissioner, Mr. Otto, and his board, the Butler's National Hangar at 5A at New Century, it's, oh, excuse me, is being, it's over a 30,000-foot hangar that's being enlarged, so there's a lot of stuff going on there. They're also expanding their office out there, so I just want to let the Commission know that. Again, I brought up, there was a Commission on Aging meeting this week, and I want to thank Commissioner Hanslick and Commissioner Faust for giving the presentation on the homeless. Also, the Chair wanted to, along with the Commission, to voice their gratitude, and they are looking at the House Bill 2543 because their concerns about what the effect that could do on the Commission on Aging. I would also like to report from Chief Myers from Fire One, that Station 5 has opened up the administration office, and they are now located there. They hope on the 15th of this month to open up the complete fire station. They do plan on having a, he let me know it's not a ribbon coming, it's something to do with the hoses, so, but they will have a public, a public event at the fire station somewhere between March to the end of March, and they'll let all of us know when that happens. And you know, this is just a huge enhancement of creating, you know, less time of fire safety, so it really does fill a big ballot entrance. And then also, they're hoping that MEDAC will also be there, which will be a big plus for the citizens out in Edgerton and DeSoto, that area, not DeSoto, but Gardner, and that in that incorporated area, and they hope to move in in February. So with that...
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Faust.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Allen Brand. It was a real joy to present at the Commission on Aging this week. Is Dr. Ariola still on? Is he gone?
He probably left.
I think he's off.
No, I am on. I'm here.
He's left the building.
I'm glad you, I hope you can take a nap at times.
Right ahead.
Yeah, so I've had school board members from both my school districts, they're wondering when you'll be able to contact trace, that is really key for them, as, you know, with their metrics for their buildings to go mask optional, is to have that support from the county health department on a contact tracing. When do you think you'll be able to resume it now that our infection rate is lower?
The, I am happy to forward to you a recent news release from national public health agencies, Nature, ASTO, and others. The idea behind contact tracing is disease containment, which is basically, we want to identify those who are infected and their contacts to prevent the spread. Once you have a widespread activity of the virus, we are at a stage that we're calling mitigation stage rather than, than contact tracing stage, there could be some situations where those are still necessary. Resources for case investigations been devoted to schools and those that are under 18 and some in 65-plus. So I think the schools, we engage them regularly and we still talk to them. The metrics, we can work with them on what their appropriate metrics are, but we are constantly changing the tactics to reflect what is needed and where we are rather than just doing it. Right now, the thought in the public health community is we are out of the disease containment stage, and the need for contact tracing is not as much, but I am again happy to discuss those with our schools.
Yeah, I mean, because our, as our rate goes down, it seems like we'd be, we'd be able more to work with our vulnerable communities, nursing homes, schools, I understand, not the wider community, that it would be more doable. Am I correct as we...
Yes, yes, you are correct. Those would be helpful moving forward.
Okay, thank you. I have one item, just a reminder that January 14 is the next meeting of the Charter Commission. That'll be at 4:00 PM, I believe, at KU Edwards Campus.
Valentine's Day?
So, pardon?
Is that Valentine's Day?
Woo-hoo, yeah.
Evidently, if it's the 14th, it is the...
Well, are we going to get chocolates?
Well, if you buy them.
So, all right, that completes our action agenda for today. So we, before we adjourn, we want to take about a 40-minute break for lunch and come back. We've got five items on the agenda review, or do you want to proceed?
Let's eat.
You want to proceed?
Lunch.
Let's eat.
Pardon?
I need, I need to eat.
I'd like a break.
All right, okay. We'll take a break for 30... It's 12:45. We'll come back at 1:20 and complete our agenda review. We are adjourned from our regular session. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.